I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Maybe I should repeat that since the microphone was off. I apologize. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Tuesday, May 28th, 2019, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in this evening's table file, you had some additional materials for Director of Finance Val Merkstorff's proposed 2019-2020 general fund budget. There was a committee report provided. There were appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignment, and a couple of resignations.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We are going to, this evening, as part of our parliamentary procedure, and Robert Strohl's adding, making one procedural change. We are going to formally approve the agenda this evening and as we move forward. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Alan. Is there a second? Second by Rob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is formally approved. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we have a few this evening. We've got several from the Student Activities Office. We are proud to say that Northfield Raiders softball team entered the playoffs this week as the number-one seed. We just got word that they were victorious over Winona 2-0, and will play on Thursday in the section finals for an opportunity to go to state. This could be the first softball team from Northfield to go to state if they prevail on Thursday. So, good luck to the Raiders. We've had lacrosse and baseball on track also competing in the playoffs this week. We also want to remind folks, the Maroon Gold Banquet is on Wednesday, May 29th, in the middle school, and the reception begins at 6:00 PM, and awards to follow at 7:00 PM. And then, just also want to remind people that we have some special things happening this week with some seniors graduating tomorrow night. One of my favorite events of the year, the Area Learning Center graduation, that's at 6:30 PM here in the high school auditorium. And then, on Sunday, June 2nd, it's going to be 70 degrees and sunny at 2:00 PM as we host the Northfield High School graduation. And again, thanks to all of our school leaders and teachers and everyone who are doing all of the work to get those things ready to go tomorrow night and this weekend. Those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent, thank you. Other, any other items where members would like to add? Well, we always traditionally, the Tuesday after Memorial Day, need to acknowledge our Northfield High School band and their performance in the Memorial Day celebration yesterday. I think it's just really a wonderful way for our community to connect with our school. For many, hearing our band may be the only connection they have to our school. So, our bands always serve as amazing ambassadors to the schools, and to our schools and to the students here. So, they did a wonderful job. And then, I do have to acknowledge and say appreciation to Mayor Ponell and the City Council who presented really wonderful certificates at the City Council meeting last Tuesday evening for all of our graduating seniors who have served in Youth on Boards. And Mayor Ponell had some really wonderful remarks about our students and how they've engaged in the community and the value their voice brings to the work of the city, and of course, encouraging them to be involved in whatever city they choose to live. So, it was really wonderful for them to take the time to acknowledge them at their City Council meeting. So, great things happening in the community that really supports our students and the work that they have done in reaching out to the community. So, with that, we can move on to our first item, our first report item. Tonight, we have a report on the flex hour at the high school, specifically the career and college readiness aspect of the flex hour. And here to present the results of this survey, Northfield High School Principal Joel Lear and Mark Enzrude, Guidance Counselor at the high school. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. And Superintendent, with all due respect, I believe it's going to be 73 and sunny. So, I'm being a little more optimistic than you are. And you mentioned Joel Lear and Mark Enzrude. You will see shortly that the names should be in reverse order because I know my place when members of our team become major leaders in initiatives for our students and staff. So, I will shortly be getting out of the way and allowing the person with the real knowledge to step in here and take over. But, one of the things I've been reflecting on is, as Dr. Hillman asked that we present this update to the board of how things have gone this year with CCR. The truth of the matter is that the idea of better preparing our students for the multitude of options and choices that they have when they leave this place has really been a conversation that has been occurring for a number of years, specifically in some certain departments, certainly, going back many years. But really, groups of community members and staff and students have really engaged in this conversation at times, a little bit plodding and slow, and sometimes stop and go and stop and go. But, really, a number of years at play that have really gotten us to this point where, in some ways, it feels like the first year of something. But in truth, it's been very much something that's been at play for a number of years. And I bring that up because of all of those years that it has been in play. Mr. Enzrude has certainly been part of that planning and leadership. In fact, I go back to the very first meeting of the Career and College Readiness Action Team and showing up in the road and seeing Mark there and thinking, "Oh, Mark's here." And then, he got up and led the session. So, he's clearly been an integral part of it since the beginning. So, I'm going to step to the side and let Mark kind of take over and fill you in on some of the history that brings us to the point where we're at today, and then the survey results. And I'll be available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lear. Let's see if I can navigate through this. And Joel mentioned that we've been kind of a long time coming as far as the CCR component that came into the flex period. And what got us to implementation this year was a lot of work from our staff, to be honest. It was a lot of folks coming around the table that dates back prior to, certainly, last year. We got pretty intense with conversations, and we came to the school board and gave you a little update and weren't quite sure how things were going to look. And then, we got down to the nitty-gritty details and figured out exactly how it was going to look. And that was based on a staff vote that was conducted to determine that we were going to implement career and college readiness as a part of our flex hour initiative that started this year. And that was a vote that was really a credit to watching our staff come together. It was really energizing, as someone who's been in the district for almost 25 years now, to see our staff kind of come around different initiatives and work towards time and space during the day where students could have some freedom and flexibility, and time and space on a once-a-week basis where our students could come together around career and college readiness. So, our implementation model for this year was essentially led by a group of staff members that we spread out by grade levels. So, we had a couple of staff members who were leading the charge for 9th graders, a couple of staff members leading the charge for 10th grade, similar for 11th and similar for 12th grades. Our CCR cohorts took place once per week, each Tuesday during the first or second half of flex hour. Half of our grades were the first half of flex, the other half of our grades were the second half of flex. And when we crunched the numbers, the math of what we were doing throughout the year as far as career and college readiness cohorts was about 32 weeks, give or take a week, thanks to Mother Nature somewhere in the third quarter. 25 minutes per session, so we spent about 800 minutes on career and college readiness as far as seat time, which, when we boil it down, is really an equivalent to about 17 high school class periods. And that's something that I've done the math on to measure myself once in a while in terms of, this was a big undertaking and a lot of effort from a lot of staff members, but it was 17 class periods that it took place during, over the course of the school year when we really crunched the numbers. So, it was something that was a big step, but a small step at the same time, I think, in a direction of providing something for all of our students. The delivery model through which we chose to go was a combination of ramp-up readiness, which is used in our 7th and 8th grade health courses as part of our career and college readiness initiative at the middle school. We use that as kind of our baseline of curriculum content, and we coupled it with Naviance, which is an online program that all of our high school students have access to. And so, I don't forget later, we really saw a huge uptick in our access to Naviance throughout the course of this year. I was looking at the data today from our class that's graduating here in a few days, and they were visiting Naviance over the course of their four years over 8,000 times, and that's spread out over a lot of students. But the other class that has graduated from Northfield High School that took a second-place finish to that quantity was just over 5,000 visits to Naviance. So, we know that we were getting kids involved and engaged in the conversation around career and college readiness using something that we've had in place in the form of Naviance for quite a while, and adding a piece of ramp-up readiness is kind of a foundational curriculum around pillars of academic readiness and career readiness and college readiness, financial readiness, and social-emotional readiness. The expectations for our students were, to be honest, probably our biggest challenge in terms of implementing a flex hour for which students had freedom and flexibility for an hour a day for four days a week instead of five, because what we were doing on those Tuesdays was taking away that extra freedom and flexibility and saying, "Hey, you've got to be in a classroom for 25 minutes learning about career and college readiness." And we don't have credit to attach to it, and it's not quite like a regular class that you've been used to going to before, but we really think it's important and we really want you to go. And our students stepped up to that challenge, and really, our attendance was a lot less of an issue than I perceived. I thought it was going to be a big struggle when we're just saying, "Hey, please come. We're going to give you the opportunity to plan your life." But sometimes, when kids have to choose that between that and hanging out with friends and going to lunch, it's a tricky sell. But our kids did a great job. I think really, the credit again goes back to our staff for getting them to buy in. You can see the goals and objectives upfront. We've met those goals and objectives. I'll cut to the chase on that as far as what we were able to accomplish in our first year. I think I still have, I'll be honest, I think I have two seniors that I need to track down the next couple of days who are still trying to follow up. One of them's a full-time PSEO senior who's a little harder to track down because they haven't been in our building all year. Another one is trying to put their focus and emphasis on making sure they get a diploma on Sunday, and that's where the priority needs to be for that student. But we have certainly addressed some of our graduation rate goal. Post-secondary completion rates will be more of a long-term piece that we want to keep an eye on. We'll see some data around the building fostering relationships. And I get really excited about the fact that every single one of our students was involved in this effort. They were all participating. So, halfway through the school year, we did a survey of our staff. We had 55 respondents, and that's of the 71 staff members who were leading a CCR cohort. So, 71 of our staff, that's almost everyone, and then someone, our teaching staff, were spread out across our four grade levels. We were averaging 20 students per CCR cohort. So, when we talk about our average class sizes, we're super excited about being able to have no more than 20 students in pretty much every cohort. One of the things we asked for our staff input around was which post-secondary readiness category do you feel has been covered best so far? And again, that was the halftime score of our first year of implementation. And by and large, our adults in the building were seeing skills of academic readiness and skills towards admissions or post-secondary readiness as our top-two categories, with a third-place finish going to social-emotional readiness. And you'll see this question come back in the form of getting some student input in a few minutes. So, if you want to file that one away, we'll see it in its second form in a couple of minutes. Next question for staff was, of the readiness categories, which did they feel had been best, had been covered least, sorry, or least effectively so far? And by and large, our staff was seeing career readiness as something that, at the halftime score, we weren't ahead of the game. And I appreciated that input at the halfway point. Our leadership team came back together in January and made some adjustments, and really, I think, made a more intentional efforts or a more intentional effort towards career readiness in the second half of the year. I think we have some great evidence from our Career Exploration Day just a couple of weeks ago, where all of our 10th graders and a good chunk of seniors attended, as well as the two weeks prior to that, we had some short-term kind of summer job fair opportunities going on for our 10th graders. So, we really tried to zero in on that and address it in the second half of the year. There's some arrows to a line here. We were asking, we knew, because we'd attended a lot of ramp-up readiness workshops, we knew that the content of ramp-up was not flawless, just like any classroom teacher will tell you that the quality of the content of the curriculum, the first time they deliver it, will be better the second time because they will make some good adjustments. We felt that coming in, and I was actually encouraged by seeing that we needed to improve a multitude of things, but nothing hit us over the head with a sledgehammer as far as, "Boy, we've got to fix this right now." So, we've zeroed in on trying to make sure, I think the bottom two on the list on the right are where we're going to put a good chunk of energy and effort, is really helping students connect what they're doing in career and college readiness to the here and now, as well as the long term. And the long term's tricky because it's all about you don't know what you don't know when you're talking about planning for your career and your life after high school. So, there's a lot of exploration, and it's hard to expect students and families to be experts on things they haven't experienced before. But that's where we want to make sure we're making relevant connections when we're in those times together on Tuesdays. So, we had 872, or about 70% of our high school students respond after first semester to our survey. And I think one of the most encouraging things that came out of one of their first questions is we wanted them to identify what the best part was, and we wanted to narrow it down to the adult who's guiding you in the room, the students who are in the room with you, or the stuff that were put in front of you. And overwhelmingly, it's the relationship piece that you, as a board, have seen a lot of energy towards, and we, as staff, try and put a ton of energy towards. Our students were recognizing that it was either the teacher in front of them or the students they were sharing the experience with that are the highlights. And as someone who's been both in the classroom and in the counseling office, I will forever believe that we will see stuff like this, no matter what the quality of the content of the curriculum looks like, when we are doing our best. And I think that's something that was encouraging, that especially nodding to our teachers who, our teachers were nervous going into this. This is not really many of their comfort zones or in their wheelhouse. They were feeling stretched, and for our students to recognize that the teachers were there for them and making positive connections is really encouraging. Similar, same question that we gave staff. What content is most important and improving in terms of content and format, the delivery? And again, pretty widespread, most often zeroing in on how are we connecting this stuff to future plans? And again, that's a good challenge when students don't necessarily know what or are going to continually change their future plans, but trying to bait those meaningful connections is something we want to really pay attention to. No huge shock either from the student standpoint that the number-two answer was more videos. Fortunately, we are not going to YouTube video them to death. There were a decent number of videos in the content, and we're going to try and build on one of those essential skills of building communication and interpersonal skills with one another. So, we actually might not pay as close attention to the more videos plea on behalf of the students, but we will pay attention to the third-place finisher of more interactive or hands-on activities because we do want to engage them in conversations with the adults and with their peers in the room. Perception after first semester for over 35% of our students was that academic readiness was what we had covered best first semester. And I think that makes sense from a standpoint of that's what all of our students have been expected to be focusing on for all of their school careers. So, if they weren't quite sure what financial readiness or career readiness or admissions readiness or social-emotional readiness meant, I think their fallback is always going to be academic readiness. And I think it was good to see that in our second-place slot of, I believe it was just about 18 and 1/2%, students were seeing social-emotional readiness. And I think that's a really valuable connection to make in content that can be pretty much just about your future. I think it's important that we were trying to tie it back to their well-being and the here and now in order to be able to make those solid future plans. Most important in the eyes of our students after one semester was the career readiness, which again, I think I tried to mention when we were talking about staff. There is, those two data points are ones that we're taking, I think, probably more to heart than anything else we've been given so far in terms of, we know our kids get great academic skills coming through the Northfield Public School system. We know we live in a community that emphasizes college readiness, whether we are doing it intentionally or not. We're a product of our environment to some extent, and that's going to happen. Financial readiness, I think, is something that kids are starting to become aware of. I would like to break that one down next year by grade level to see which grade level and watch that trajectory as they start realizing, "Oh, this stuff's going to cost somebody some money" as they go past high school. I think that's when the corner starts turning for our juniors and seniors especially. Moving ahead, which is where we are literally right now. For example, last Tuesday, a week ago today, was our last CCR cohort for the school year. Tomorrow morning, right before our PLC time, we have a bunch of staff getting together in this space to talk about some plans towards next year. Our leadership team's coming together. We've got some new folks who asked to come to the table and be involved in the conversation. So, we are starting to look at what's it going to look like next year. We do know our staff, in their survey at the halfway point, at that point, 80% of them were saying, "We want to stay with the same grade level." True teachers who want to be better at something the second time instead of rely on just their first-at-bat want to come back and work at the same grade level. They like the kids they worked with, but they know they want to work with the material again to try and hone it and make it a little more, a little more relevant to both themselves and to their students. Some things that we need to adjust in terms of, we tried to house our rosters in a Google Sheet for every teacher because we didn't form cohorts until after the school year had started, so to house it in Skyward was darn near impossible. So, we went with Google, and it was fine, but we have a variety of staff members in terms of who's comfortable accessing attendance in a different location than they're used to for their other class periods in the day. So, now, we're able to get ahead of it. We've already got our ideas for mixing our 9th and 10th grade. We're not basing it off of any self-report interest area or post-secondary plans. And then, for 11th and 12th graders, we're going to use a survey they did last Tuesday, identifying their career area of interest and identifying, as of right now, what they're looking at for post-secondary plans, and create our cohorts around those. We feel at the 11th grade level especially emphasizing those interest areas, hoping that kids aren't pigeonholing themselves into one pathway. And then, as seniors, when really everything comes together in a super-specific package for each individual student as far as their application process and what they have to do to get fully prepared, we want to put that right alongside that interest area so we know that we're supporting them in their specific needs. Which brings us to kind of the themes by grade level that you can take a look at. That wasn't a part of the ramp-up curriculum. That was part of what our staff is seeing from our students' needs as the school year has progressed, in terms of really spending 9th grade looking inward, spending 10th grade looking outward and exploring as much as we can as far as careers and pathways, knowing that we have the pre-ACT in 10th grade that is a big college readiness benchmark that gives us some data to respond to for 11th grade when those pathways, as far as training and education, and choice around ACT versus Accuplacer versus ASVAB become reality, and then really building unique and individual paths as seniors are moving through our building in their final year. We have some questions to finalize. I would suggest that we want to find a way to increase autonomy. I think our flexible learning days taught us a lot of things third quarter, and one of the things that we were trying to look at from a CCR perspective is it's not a regular class. There are ways that we can either assign tasks or give some work that needs to happen between now and X date down the road, and do we take advantage of that opportunity and set up some individual office hour type of cohort times rather than whole classroom or whole cohort group time? So, some different ways of trying to get at every week, every other week. Do we try and create that individual advisement time within this timeframe that we're using? Again, we're planning to use that same little block of time on Tuesdays. We also know that our greatest challenge was, it's not credit-bearing. It's not something where, and in the eyes of, I think, some adults, what can we hold over them? I would prefer to look at more as what can we put in front of them that would entice them and encourage them to really work on their own individual needs and future plans? And then, at the end, we're talking about staff development and support. Part of our decision coming into this year was that each staff member would get a little chunk of time to help plan and prepare, and as all good teachers, there were some who were going way above and beyond what we were putting in front of them in terms of trying to prepare a quality product. And the leadership team, I think, went above and above and beyond in trying to help put material together for our students in a way that was meaningful. And the thing that has been, I think, really rewarding as a counselor who's known a lot of our staff in the building is to watch people come at it from that lens of, "What can we do to make it better?" Not that we haven't, we've got a good start. It's a foundation, but what are we going to do next that we can really build off of and build towards in ways that will benefit our students? And it's that kind of buy-in that is exciting, and I'm not going to lie and say that everybody was all-in on all fronts. That wouldn't be truthful. That wouldn't be helpful, and it wouldn't be realistic. But we do have people who work from that continuous improvement lens of, "What can we do to keep improving this as we move forward into our second year?" With that...
All right. Well, and I would just wrap this part up and then open it up for questions, but some of the data, I think, really speaks to two things. One, the students' adjustment to the idea of they were getting some information that, you know, the expression, "You don't know what you don't know." And so, we have historically been a district, we are a college prep high school, so we've been a very narrow focus. I don't mean narrow focus in terms of the number of opportunities students have, but we've never put them together in a way that asks students to consider a multitude of choices and pathways for them beyond high school. And so, as you look at some of the feedback from students, I think some of that, over time, we expect to see an improvement in terms, not an improvement, but numbers going up to say, "We see the value of this part and this part and this part," because there are things that students are adjusting to, the idea of thinking about an alternative pathway or a different option for them in terms of a career choice or a college choice that they may have thought didn't have choices. The second piece would be, as we looked at the options to say, "How could we improve what we're delivering in CCR?" And the more of this and the more of that. And a lot of those answers to say, "We want more speakers," came out of the fact that, I mean, the ramp-up to readiness doesn't come with a bunch of speakers. Those are pieces that were, you know, that our staff augmented and said, "You know what? This is coming up. This could be useful. Let's pull this person in." In some cases, it was Mark as the leader of the CCR implementation to say, "We're going to be doing this with this group of speakers and this group of people who come in and address the students." But between Mark and the adults who were in charge of each of those cohorts, really presenting opportunities to students that were really on the fly in terms of that planning because his staff got used to the way the curriculum was being delivered, saw some holes, saw some ways to augment it, really expanded in a way that I think is very useful. Last thing I'm going to say, and then I'll go to the slide that says questions, is just the piece that with the staff vote that allowed us to do the flex period and also the CCR piece embedded within it was a two-year vote. And what I have really seen coming out of that from the staff is really a pursuit of the CCR processes, "We're going to go through this once, and we're going to see what it's like, and then we're going to work to make it our own, make it better, and make it the best we can make it," by bringing those expertise that we have as teaching staff. So, as excited as I've been about this first year and the positive experience it's been for this first year of implementation, I'm really looking at that second year where the skills of the adults that are working with the students in this curriculum can really blend in with the curriculum as it's presented and make it a fuller, richer experience across the board. So, with that, I almost hit my own little cursor, but what questions do you have?
Excellent presentation. Board members, questions, comments? Rob?
So, I suppose I'm going to get ahead of the agenda here because you were talking about the goals of the CCR cohort was by 2019, 100% of students will develop a realistic plan for their future. And Mary Grace is going to give a presentation where she talks about a goal of 80% of seniors will demonstrate college career readiness by reaching an ACT, college-ready benchmark, et cetera. So, I'm wondering about the connection between the work you're doing and that goal that she's going to present in the future.
That's a great question. Who wants to go?
Why is your number so low, Mary?
Ours is based on...
College readiness, ACT.
ACT score.
Benchmark, yep.
Yeah, and theirs is based, as I understand it, on a plan.
Yes, and the plan that our students house is in Naviance. It actually came as part of the ramp-up curriculum to identify under those pillars of academic readiness and admissions readiness and career readiness, to flesh those out categorically and be able to articulate at this, at that moment in time, what are we saying for each individual student, their plan is. And we now have access to that. For years, at the end of the school year, we've simply asked seniors... For years, at the end of the school year, we've simply asked seniors, "What are you going to be doing next fall?" And we still do that. And that's valuable self-report information that lets us compare and contrast with what Clearinghouse data shows us. But now we've got the story behind the answer that comes out their senior year, and that's a story that they're starting to write in ninth grade, and some of them are heavily revising. And some are sticking to that original story. But we're trying to help them build that as they move through. So it's more of a narrative than a test score. They do. They are both important.
So when you talked about 11th grade to focus on the ACT, AccuPlace, or ASVAB, whatever this will be, that goal will be part of what's done in 11th grade in your program?
I think I'll walk it back to 10th grade. When we get our 10th graders ready to take the pre-ACT for the first time, so they get a chance to practice it and see what things look like, we can use that data to help inform and share back, "Hey, you're on track to hit this college readiness benchmark of 21 next year, and hey, you've got a little ways to go, and this was your career interest area. There are other ways you can get to that same end destination. There's a lot of different pathways that we can start identifying, some of which include things like AccuPlace for two-year schools and ASVAB for military interest and stuff like that."
Great. Thanks.
If I could just add to that, Rob, that I think one of the things that we've been discussing is kind of a tagline of "choice-ready." You know, when we really think about what is our vision, our vision is that every student leaves this high school with the maximum amount of choice. So if I want to attend a highly selective four-year school, that's a choice that I have. If I want to enter the workforce, I know what the workforce options are. I know how to get there. I have confidence that I can pursue whichever choice I want. So we're kind of adopting, you know, the tagline, hashtag "choice-ready," which of course, you know, we would go down that road. And I think the two different things is that the goal of the ACT, AccuPlace, as you'll hear from Mary a little bit later, is to make sure that we have a measurable target, that students have the skills to pursue the choice that they desire. The plan is an outcome from that. So I now, I think there's a key word in that statement, which is a realistic plan. So, you know, if my academic skill set is maybe not ready for a highly selective four-year college, that's okay. And we want to help you use that knowledge to be able to develop, what is the realistic plan for you? And so I think that they aren't in conflict with one another. I actually think the one is an important foundation for setting what that realistic plan is.
Great question. Amy?
First, thank you for this presentation. I just want to say this is very exciting to actually think that students can think beyond the same day that they're living in and that you're...
We didn't say anything about that.
And just giving them the idea that they should think more long-term. And in fact, I went to the Capstone Projects the other day, and I talked to a student there, a young man, who his whole project was on figuring out what to do when he graduated. And he researched the different options, and he ended up being able to explain why it was going to work well, that he'd take a year off of school, get a job, save money, and then go to technical school and get a high-paying job in the trades. But I'm sure what you've done here inspired him to come up with that Capstone idea, and then he wanted to be able to convince his parents that this is what he needed to do. But he had it all laid out and all the research done. So I don't know if you saw that one, but it was a really interesting project.
You hit on the, we have a good opportunity for some parent engagement coming. I think we really focused hard on what do we put in front of our students this year? But there is a lot about career and post-secondary planning that is a lot different than when all of us kind of came through the pipeline, and there's some changes afoot in terms of what leads to what and how to get through some of the pathways. So yeah, I agree, there's good opportunity.
Well, and some of that is much like educating the students on the number of options and choices that there are beyond, like I said, what we have historically been as a college preparatory high school. That same message has to get out to parents. And really, this movement in the school has always been, in terms of preparing students for those choices, has always had this parallel discussion to say, "And then how do we make that an integral part of our community? How do we get the community to understand all of those aspects of the multitude of choices that students have?" So they don't, they're not always thinking about it in terms of, "Well, that's okay for those students or this group of students, that these options are available to everyone." And we just don't know when a student's starting high school or even midway through high school, what the final choice will be. So as Dr. Hillman says, to have students ready and capable of grabbing a hold of a multitude of choices just simply makes them, you know, puts them in a much better place of strength and advantage.
I don't remember the young man's name, but you should figure out who it is, sort of follow up with them in a year, and have him come back and talk to the students who are planning to see if it actually worked, you know?
That's a great point. And one of our highlights this year, in December, we brought in students who graduated last year. We had all our seniors in the auditorium for one of their CCR days, and we did, we tried to hit every landing point possible after their first year out. And that's a great point, because I am, at this time of year, starting to think about, who are we going to have in front of our students next year?
Somebody's going to know who did that project.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, you know already? Okay. Then I do have a question for you. I've been very involved with Rotary Exchange students, and I know they have a different set of issues than the regular students. And I'm wondering how you tackle them, and if you do even consider that they're coming from a different place when they're discussing their future.
First, I would actually like to access their expertise in the multitude of systems from which they come. When we talk about panel opportunities, I would love to put our Rotary students, when they've been here and are comfortable enough, in front of some of our students to talk about what's different. Because I get to do it all the time in my counseling office when Rotary students are enrolling, and it's fascinating, the different educational systems and beliefs they have coming to our system. Flip side of that is, Rotary does a great job of telling us that, try and give them the same experience that everybody else is having here. And I think that's hard at times for them because they are going back, by and large, to the system from which they came. But to help them, I think, get a better understanding of what the opportunities and pathways look like here and how that can help inform some of their own choice-making, because I think, again, that's hopefully a value add for them, is if they can learn some of those skills of making choices, those skills can apply across a lot of...
Right. I think there's a lot of overlap. They just have the question like the TOEFL question and, you know, what it's like to come back to the United States and study in English. So I don't know if there would be special sub-class you could do to talk about a few of those questions they have, but I just wanted to throw that out there.
Sure.
You already do a lot of wonderful things for the Rotary students, so thank you for that as well.
You're welcome. What it also highlights, illustrates for us, you know, as obvious as the Rotary difference is, that they're coming from a foreign country and they're having this year-long experience, it allows us to engage all of our students and think about all of our students as coming from a widely and sometimes wildly diverse set of backgrounds. So sometimes when we look at the Rotary students or the Exchange students in a group, and then we see everyone else has this kind of student, and we've got these Rotary students, now we've kind of clustered them a little bit unfairly. So to me, that's a good reminder that every student comes with this incredible, or this unique background, in some cases similar to others in small groups and in large groups. But if we see them as individuals and then see how we can apply that value of a program like CCR universally, whether they are from a foreign country or from a rural area or a city, you know, then we can address all of those needs at the same time.
Thank you. Other questions?
So thank you for your presentation. I was really struck by your response right on the halftime survey, which was fantastic, and knowing that you were already thinking about the end of the year, which where you get 100%. Your data collection is fantastic. My question has to do with the middle school connection, so there's ramp-up to readiness at the middle school and at the high school. And I'm wondering how you're thinking about that relationship as the kids that start coming through that have had many more, much more exposure to whatever the middle school is providing and how that is going to change things or not.
Right, and that was something we were trying to learn from our current ninth graders this year already, because they did receive the content in their eighth grade health class last year. And we were trying to be also very upfront with them, that this is going to look and feel different because it wasn't coming in the middle of a class that they were taking. And that's something where we do want to keep building and find the right kind of scope and sequence. Ramp-up is pretty good about looping, but that can teeter on the edge of repetition in the eyes of kids at times, too. So we're trying to be cognizant of that and not overdo it on the repetition. Where, for example, the middle school has probably de-emphasized the financial readiness pillar of ramp-up, and we know that that pillar needs to get bigger as students get older. So we want to build most of that pillar, I think, in 11th and 12th grade. So it's those conversations we need to keep having with the leadership in the middle school, as well as, I think, collecting some data on the front end from our incoming ninth graders. Next year's ninth graders will have two years of exposure, and I think we need to hear from them what they've learned before we assume we've got all the answers figured out. And we have time to do it, because we learned this year that we can also partner our LINK and other transition activities as part of CCR. So the next year, we can have our LINK groups kind of established within those cohorts and do some more transition activities on the front end of the school year, and then be able to kind of build off of what they've learned in the middle school.
That's a great, that was a great question. Thank you. No?
I would share a conversation I have with my grandson, who is a student at Stillwater. And they have, you can check it out, but I think this is accurate. They have a career interest study in 7th grade. And the idea, after talking with him, is that it gives me an opportunity to pick and choose courses earlier than I would be able to if it wasn't, if I had to wait till sophomore or junior. So as a 7th, as a 9th grader, he took a course in welding. He said, "I'm going to take it now because I won't be able to fit it in with the curriculum the rest of the time. I'm going to be a mechanical engineer, and I'll be competing with kids, with students, graduates, that won't have welding, and I'll have an advantage," which was his logic. But he also said, "I want to take that course early because I need to take all the math and sciences that I can, and they'll be more helpful in college if I take them later in my school career." So I think he'll make a pretty good mechanical engineer.
Other questions? Tom?
So I'm usually the last to find out what my kids are doing. So you were talking about parental engagement. Are there ways to inform the parents what they, and I think you talked about sharing the plan with a caring adult. Hopefully that's a parent.
It should be a list, yeah.
Yeah, some feedback to the parents. We know what our kids are doing or thinking about.
Right. And I think some of it is, I don't want to say is easy, but we, I'll go I on this one. I didn't do a lot of getting the information out in newsletters or putting it out in front of. I need some input from our media team to help get some word out there. I think we got very inward-focused this year, and I really think there are also some rich opportunities to, not the old-school "bring your parent into work to talk about what they do at work" day, but I think we can leverage our resources here in our community, too, of getting parents involved from a broader scope. I think it's a healthy way of getting some parent volunteers engaged. I also think, as we're talking about taking a closer look at how we do parent-teacher conferences, I think taking some of what we're doing in CCR time, that provides a great opportunity to be able to have conversations. We always host a FAFSA night that is well-attended during conferences, and I think taking some of those topics from CCR that we know parents and families and students could all learn from, I think hosting some information that way is also something that we can take a closer look at. But really, we have to start somewhere in just getting some info in our newsletters and publications that way.
So do the kids make a plan to write it down or anything? And could they like have, take it home, have a parent sign that they've seen it so there's at least some comprehension on both parts?
I think there are two ways that we tried to house some readiness information from students this year, and we kind of tried to test-drive it two ways to see which one would be more user-friendly from the student's perspective. One was through kind of a Google form, something called the Readiness Rubric. The other was a post-secondary plan document that we housed in Naviance. I would love to, and once we got students into Naviance more easily, more of a username and password issue than anything else, once we were able to do that, that is the tool that, when I've had parents in my office with students talking about post-secondary planning, that's the tool that I see parents get excited about. So I think if we can house more of our content within Naviance that students use on a more regular basis, are more comfortable bringing home with them. Unlike School of G, we don't have a parent access account that we can set up, but I'm hoping that we're able to open the door to those at-home conversations through a program that all our kids have access to all the time.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm wondering about, you know, what you find for, I would call it, futurists and future studies and where the jobs are going to be. And I just think of myself as a living example. When I graduated from high school and went to Augsburg and graduated and became the first wireless rep for the first wireless company in Minnesota hired by the guy that started Sprint, I mean, that wasn't even around. And to me, it's kind of like, there's going to be a lot of, I mean, it's technology, 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 and we know in a year in technology how that duplicates and duplicates. And I think obviously there's going to be tons of advancements in that, and I'm just wondering, what, you know, what do you see for futurists and what kind of opportunities, you know, are out in that area, I mean, as far as technology?
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead. One, for our students who are looking at that four-year college path, places like the University of Wisconsin-Madison are now creating major programs of study around jobs that haven't been created yet. So it's more of the ideas behind the jobs that haven't been, more of a think-tank approach, creativity, innovation type of majors. The other one that I think we'll start, we're already starting to see more of even locally, is especially some of those either high-tech or manufacturing or even some in our health sciences, where there is a growing workforce need for kids right out of high school. We're starting to see a little more trend in the direction of employers doing the hiring and not just providing the specific training they need, but compensating for the future training and education. So I think we'll continue to actually see more of our students enter the workforce right away and then do the training and education that they need off of that. There's some interesting research out there on that front as far as how the paradigm is starting to shift a little bit. And some of that comes out of things like student loan crisis, but some of it comes out of the, not desperation yet for employers, but deed is projecting quite a few holes to fill when the number of folks exiting the workforce is surpassing the number of kids coming into the workforce. There's going to be a lot of jobs out there.
And we brought, we, which I had nothing to do with, people that can come in and regularly explain to students where those jobs are available now and where the trends will be. So as part of, Mark mentioned, the financial aid presentation that has happened during parent-teacher conferences, we, for a number of semesters, brought an individual who would really highlight those job opportunities as they unfolded in, you know, the next five to 10 to 15 years. I think that does two things. One, the obvious point is it says, "Here's where the jobs are going to be. So think about your plan through the lens of how readily employable do you want to be for these positions that are going to be open?" But the second piece of that is to kind of inspire students to think outside of maybe a particular narrow band through, for example, I was an English major. I was headed to become a teacher. Had you thrown a list of all of the things I could do and was better qualified to do because I'm an English major, I might have said, "Oh, don't even think about those." And may have been steered in a direction, whether it be in high school or early part of college, to at least experiment or try one of those things. So I think part of the, you know, Mark mentioned the idea of, you know, preparing students for jobs that don't exist, which is exciting and scary all at the same time. But also just that these community members that are connecting with us saying, "We are going to have a real shortage." And other people who are looking at the statistical data of retirements and job growth in certain areas so that students can see that and begin to talk about the, you know, the plan that Tom was asking about through the lens of, "Well, maybe I tailor my plan to these areas where the jobs are going to be available."
Other questions? Comments?
Amy? I was hoping you could comment on whether the Career and College Readiness Program has any, whether it does any community building within the high school by the fact that it's all of a, all the students are going through a shared experience, and it's a shared experience where they're focusing on themselves and sharing themselves as well, maybe with each other and with their teacher. And I'm just wondering if that would cause any sense of greater unity? And I'm just wondering if that would cause any sense of greater unity within the high school and sense of community?
Well, it certainly is a goal of the program. Obviously, college career readiness doesn't say, doesn't broadcast that relational piece, but as Mark pointed out, on the statistical data that we have from the survey, you know, the biggest component of that program is the relationships that they're building with their cohort leaders, as well as their classmates in that group. And bear in mind that for many of these students, the cohort that they are traveling through the school year with as part of CCR is the smallest setting that they're moving through all day. And so even though it's happening once a week, so it's happening far fewer times than a regular class meets, they're meeting with 15 other students, or 16 other students, or 17, and at most 20. And very few of our classes occur with that small group of people. And with a dialogue that's occurring around a topic that is common to all of them, all of our learners are moving through at different paces and developing understanding at different rates. But this is a place where the dialogue is about this common piece, and it's relevant to everyone. So there are certainly nuances where maybe ramp up to readiness doesn't speak direct, you know, that title doesn't speak directly to relationship building, or career college readiness isn't about individual relationship building. But certainly, the data that we're seeing says that it is absolutely a byproduct that our students and staff are benefiting from.
And I think that's a very important byproduct for the whole school.
Absolutely. Be bet.
It was, I mentioned the panel of last year's graduates. We did another panel of, in late April, of this year's seniors who had decided what they were going to do next year. We had the auditorium full of ninth graders. So the seniors were talking about, "Here's what I'm going to do next. Here's why I'm going to do this. Here's what I would encourage you to think about as you move through your next three years of high school." And it was, it was as powerful in terms of the breadth and scope of students that were represented in the front of the room and the kids in the audience, the whole ninth grade classes together. We don't often do things as entire grade-level classes in one place at one time. Short amount of time, like we were talking about, we don't meet extremely often for large amounts of time, but if we can pull our whole grade levels together on, at least in frequent basis, I think it's more than what we were doing before, and it can build some of that shared experience piece.
Thank you. Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
I had, I had one question and one comment. My question about University of Minnesota, the ramp up to readiness curriculum. Are they moving? Are there some changes coming, some additional curriculum that you're excited about? Do they, with the middle school and the high school program, do you see that as, I think Ellen's point was, was a good one, in terms of keeping it relevant and fresh as our students move through? You know, what kind of support do they provide for you? Just give us a little insight into that curriculum.
Yeah, that's a great question. They alternate years. They will update their middle school curriculum one year, high school curriculum next year. So they're revamping for next year, their high school curriculum will be freshened up a bit, which is, I think, always exciting and different from a lot of the curriculum I was accessing when I was a classroom teacher. It's really nice to have been grandfathered in, by the way, to a model that we paid for upfront, and we, they are now doing a yearly subscription approach. So we're in for as long as we want to stay in, and we get updated curriculum every couple of years out of the deal. It's tough to beat. And again, I don't think their curriculum is perfect. And I think the adults in our building are taking that as the, here's something to work with. How can we make this more locally relevant, I think, more accessible for our students? Because sometimes curriculum isn't super accessible when you just read it cold out of a box. So our teachers are open to bring it to life. But I am really happy that they continue to update it. They invite leadership team out to a once-a-year, kind of, here's what's new, here's what we've been looking at. We do get a monthly newsletter from them with three target areas to share out to families, to share to staff, and here's something new within our content that's coming.
Excellent. And I'm really excited to know that Naviance is really being fully leveraged for what it is, because it really is amazing resource. And it was, it wasn't anywhere close to being really fully maximized.
Underutilized.
That alone is just, is huge. And of course, we can't, Dr. Hillman, you have some comments possibly?
I do.
But I did want to say before, Dr. Hillman, I mean, really, I love the term unsung hero, and I think, Mark, you are that person. And I think the fact that the entire building has embraced this approach is really to your credit, honestly, because you have a passion and an energy and a skill set and just a vision around all of this, and you have been absolutely integral in the success of this. So we really owe you a huge amount of thanks and a debt of gratitude, really, because I think for all of us, this has really exceeded our expectations for what the flex hour, the way it was just piloted a year ago, the way it has rolled out, and then this additional CCR component has just been really outstanding. And of course, no one in this district rests on their laurels. The process of continuous improvement will go forward, and that's what's so exciting. We're already starting from such a great place of strength. And that is in a large part due to you, so thank you, thank you. So I wanted to be sure to get that in, Dr. Hillman, if you have any comments.
Yeah, I just have a couple of brief ones that, first of all, we just need to take a step back and wind back that this is the first real schedule change at Northfield High School since Jeff Eckoff started in the early 1980s. So I think that that's an important thing to really think about. And so this has really created a paradigm shift. It has created some logistical challenges that our entire team has come together. And when you think about an effort that a lot of people have come together for the success of kids, it happens every day, but this is an excellent example of that, how folks from our Buildings and Grounds Department, our Trial and Prision Department, all of our educational assistants to help in supervising a building that's being used in a very different way, overcoming some financial challenges, you know, that have faced this with, adopting and adjusting to student feedback during the year. This was not just something that we set it and forget it. There were multiple changes during the year. So that paradigm shift, shockingly, creates a little bit of discomfort, right? When we've used the same schedule for 40 years and we introduce something new, there has been some discomfort along with this glorious report as well. And I am actually quite pleased that I think that discomfort overall has been productive. You want productive discomfort, right, to get you out of your comfort zone. So I congratulate the high school staff in there who worked in. It's not that it was perfect, but they overcame those challenges. It's an example of when we have a clear vision and we develop a plan, we execute a skinny plan that we're nimble in adjusting along the way that we do end up with things that are good for kids. I still love, I use the term micro electives, that every day, kids get to make a different choice about how their academic, physical, or social needs might be needed to be adjusted that day. I think that's a very underrepresented thing when we talk about the flex hour, that micro elective that I get, that daily choice is really important. And then I just also want to just reiterate that we talk a lot about lifelong learning, but this is to Jeff's point, and that it really has to be more than a statement, because we don't know what the future is going to hold for those students. And that's where this dual track of making sure that you have the skills to be ready for whatever learning you're going to do after high school, and you're aware of the career options. There are some places that will say, "Well, we're going to do one or the other." We can't afford to do that. We have to do both. And so I applaud the high school leadership and the staff for really focusing on, there's this, I think we have this poll at us right now, because the economy is so good, and because there is such a low unemployment rate, whatever that happens, we immediately become the trainers for the current workforce. That is short-sighted and not good leadership, because when the economy changes, this whole dynamic is going to change. And so we are always wrestling that we are both an educational institution and a training institution. We're providing an education for students to learn in a lifelong way, while also preparing them for the world that's there right now. And it's not an easy thing, and we are always pulled back and forth on it. But I think this is a great example of how that is in balance, that we are focusing on making sure your choice ready, and at the same time, we're giving you the options for what you have when you go into the workforce. So I want to congratulate the high school on the work this year to get to this point. We know that you'll continuously improve and look at what's next, and that's exciting. So thank you for the report.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our next report, the Achievement and Integration Program. Mary Grace Hansen, Director of Teaching and Learning, will present the Achievement and Integration Plan. Welcome, Mary.
Thank you. Yep. Thank you. And I think you'll see how this will fit together with Mr. Leird and Mr. Enzrude's report too. So this has not been a slow journey on an inner tube down a river. It's been more like shooting the rapids with our integration plan. So we'll start right in. You can see on the left-hand side, we have our Northfield Public School Vision and Mission Statement, and then the purpose of the A and I, from here on abbreviated to A&amp;I, the purpose of the A&amp;I program. And you can see how they do dovetail and how the Achievement and Integration Plan will support our vision and mission, because we want to pursue racial and economic integration, increase student achievement, create equitable educational opportunities, and reduce the academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds. So our timeline, we were notified in March by Minnesota Department of Education that we were eligible for Achievement and Integration funding. This was a year late. They could have and should have notified us the year before and given us a full year for planning, but that wasn't our reality. So we started and had leadership team meetings in April and had a wonderful group of people who have worked very diligently and very hard to pull this together in this amount of time. May and June, we've had the board presentations, and then the board will vote on the June 10th meeting whether to pursue this or not. So, and if this is approved by the board, then we will submit it to MDE for their approval and then funding, and then with funding and programming to start on July 1st. This is a three-year plan with a budget and modifications due every year. So we need to have goals, of course, to apply for this. And as Dr. Hardy pointed out, we said 80% of the high school seniors will demonstrate college career choice readiness by reaching an ACT college-ready benchmark, which is 21, or an Accuplacer score of 250. And again, this is what a student would need to achieve in order to be, consider college and career-ready, and then be able to make their plan as part of the CCR program based on realistic data. All of the goals and everything we do with the A&amp;I have to align with the World's Best Workforce. And so you'll see that this one aligns with goal number four of World's Best Workforce, where all students would be college and career-ready. We also have to have key indicators of progress along our three-year plan to make sure we're on track. And so obviously, we will look at their pre-ACT scores and their ACT scores and intervene with 100% of the students who do not reach that benchmark. So there we have the 100%. So we have to also then develop strategies with how we are going to intervene with, so that we do have 100% of our students feeling that they have choice. So Odyssey Ware is a program that we can, that is being used right now at our ALC, and it can be used for credit recovery. The ALC would like to hire an academic advocate to bridge the gap between school, parent, and career readiness. We are also looking at a Reading Core internal coach, which would enable our pre-K to hire four Reading Core people, and we also have two Reading Core people at each of the elementary The Diversity and Integration Liaison would be a K-12 person that would help, again, especially with our last one with parent communication, working with parents, families, and students to bridge that knowledge gap, if you will, between what is college and career-ready. We would hire a youth development liaison and coordinator for our PLUS program, and an MTS coordinator, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support coordinator for two-tenths of an FTE at the high school. And then again, to very much emphasize the parent communication so that our students are on track. Our second goal is to reduce the reading proficiency gap between our non-FRP and our FRP student groups at the middle school. And you can see the percentages that we would like to do over the three-year period. And this would be based on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, the MCAs. And this aligns with Goal Three of the World's Best Workforce. And our strategies would be implementing AVID at the middle school, which stands for Achievement Via Individual Determination. 2019-20 would be our planning year. Right now, we have four people that are willing to attend training on July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, which, you know, is quite, for this short a notice, to be willing to attend that training in a Minnesota summer is quite remarkable. And then with implementation in 2020. The third piece that has to be required for an Achievement and Integration Plan is a student integration activity. We are eligible for the A&amp;I plan because we border Faribault, which is a racially isolated school. So we need to combine students in some form with Faribault, who also is in a consortium with WEM and TCU, Waterville, Elysian, Moorestown, and Tri-City United. So it would be those three schools plus Northfield. I've had a chance to meet twice with our Diversity Subcommittee of our District Youth Council, and we will heavily involve them in the planning for next year. They've already talked about it. We'll meet in one day, in either late November or early December, because Carlton is not in session then, so we can use that facility. And the District Youth Council will plan the day. We're looking at having a data summit, like we had here at the high school, but with all four schools and all four schools' data. Now, we won't be able to do the amount of data that we did when we had just had Northfield students. So we will have the students narrow it down to what they want to concentrate on, what they want to discuss. Then, again, because this has been rapid, they have asked the students to be thinking about planning for the year after. What do they think would be meaningful activities in terms of integration with the other three school districts? So they will be more heavily involved with coming up with the ideas in the future years. MDE has said we get $369,298, and we will spend, most of that has to be spent on actual student activities, actual interactions with students. We can spend up to 20% on professional development, which would include coaching, and we can spend $42,000, or up to 10% on administration costs. Val and I are meeting on Friday to hammer out the details of the budget and make sure everything balances. And we'll have that for you by June 10th before the vote, so you would have actual Potential modifications, and actually, the first one has been taken care of, the Reading Core Internal Coach. We had to make sure that that person didn't have to be on-site with the coach at all times, because it would be, you know, the preschool between the NRCRC building, the Longfellow building, and the three elementary buildings. And that is fine with the Reading Core people, that that would be a model they could approve. AVID implementation, again, we're looking at the staff that might need to be trained or who are willing to go on July 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of this year, and then any of the budget adjustments that we need to make to make sure the budget balances and that we have the right, do not exceed the percentages of allowable expenses. So that is a very brief update of the Achievement and Integration Plan, and I will attempt to answer any questions. As I said, this is new to us, and we've had a great leadership team that has worked very hard to put together some ideas for this.
Yes, Dr. Hillman? So I just want to also really clarify too about how the program financed
As I said, this is new to us, and we've had a great leadership team that has worked very hard to put together some ideas for this.
Yes, Dr. Hummer.
So, I just want to also really clarify, too, about how the program financing works. So, this program, once you are eligible, is a mix of aid and levy. So, roughly, if we're, you know, we're trying to round it, it's about 2/3 aid from the state, so that's direct from the state, and about 1/3 local levy. So, of the $369,000 available, you know, roughly $250,000 or so of it would come from the state and direct state aid, and approximately $111,000 would come through local levy. And so, what I want you to know is that, you know, we always take that very seriously, but this is for every dollar that we were to get from our local community, we would be getting basically $2 from the state to support this important programming. So, when you think about the fact that it's a pretty good deal, it's a pretty good deal. We have had LRS run some initial estimates on what it would cost an average taxpayer. We're going to have this for you in black and white for you the next time that we meet, but just to give you, we use the $250,000 house lot as a one that we look at, and that tax impact would be roughly $9 a year. So, we think it's a very small impact, you know, to the taxpayer, yet yielding a tremendous amount of resources for the school system. So, as you ask questions, we just want to make sure that everyone's clear that it's about 2/3 aid, 1/3 levy, and it would be part of our annual levy approval process as we move forward. So, just want to make sure that there's that clarification.
Okay, excellent. Questions, comments, or members have any?
So, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, under goal one, the 80% of high school seniors will demonstrate the ready. What is the current rate?
I'm not real sure. It's not that high.
Because that, I'm just curious how big a goal you really have.
But it's about 56.
I'd say it's between 55 and 60.
Okay, that's, I was going to say 60.
I would want to double-check.
I don't want to be discouraging, but when I see the difference between the current rate and what you're looking for, that seems like quite a stretch goal.
Right, and this is a three-year goal.
It still seems like a stretch goal.
It is, but we aim high.
Okay.
One of the things that I was talking to Hope about this last week.
Mark him up into the microphone.
When Hope and I discussed this last week, we were looking at the number of students who are within one or two points on that composite score. We have a, we have a high number of bubble kids, which makes that reach goal a little more reachable, I think. So, you're right, it is a reach goal. I think a lot of it is about taking time to really work with those individuals who are super close.
Okay, right. That helps a lot. So, an academic advocate at the ALC, is that kind of like a guidance counselor, or what would that be?
Yes, I guess that could be how you would describe it.
But that's not the license that would be required.
No.
You know, we'd be looking for someone, we'd be looking for someone with basically a teaching license and experience in working with students at this. So, it's a combination because really, at the Area Learning Center, all services are personalized. So, what a student might need, it could be specific, it could be specific instruction in English language. You know, maybe I have gaps in my language acquisition or my language arts history. So, some of it may be helping with that language arts component, but some could be providing some guidance, you know, for students and thinking about what's the next step that I'm thinking about, either career, some of that individual kind of management. Some of it could also be connecting students with other kinds of resources that are available to them where they can get some assistance. So, it could be, some of it could be picking the right Odysseyware component for them. Some of it might be connecting them with some type of mental health counseling, or could be some other, looking at what are the barriers for students being successful and making sure that we just have another caring adult who is working one-on-one with them. So, I see it as, I've been a big Twins fan for a long time, so I'm having a lot of fun right now. This is the utility infielder, really, for the Area Learning Center. They are there to really help whatever is necessary. So, I want to be really clear because a guidance counselor is a very specific term with a specific license. That is not what it's going to be. It's going to be someone who's going to adjust their, they may connect them with a counselor, but their specific work will be what does this individual student need academically, socially, emotionally, and how can they remove those barriers, help them remove those barriers.
And with emphasis on academics.
Okay. Then, could you also explain the Diversity and Integration Liaison? What is, what does that?
That's, that's still a little vague. We have not written specific job descriptions, but again, connecting some of our families just with school, how does school operate, a lot of parental communication, more that type of activity.
All right. I would suggest for the goal that you put in, you know, by 2022 or whatever, put something like that in there so.
So, it doesn't feel quite so.
So, you can see that it's a three-year goal.
Certainly, thank you.
And I also have one more question, and that is, explain to me the reason behind the four schools getting together and having activities, because that seems.
Sure. Well, part of it is because it's an achievement and integration grant, and Faribault is the isolated, racially-isolated district. And so, the districts that surround Faribault are able to access activities with each other and do some various things. It can be field trips, it can be, you know, any type of activity that would have students mix in a meaningful way.
That's going to be a tricky one, but I'm sure you'll think, get through and come up with some good ideas.
Right. Previously, I have been involved with, as a, within a racially-isolated district at an elementary school, and we had a lot of, like, second graders from each of the three schools would take field trips together and be in integrated groups. So, I mean, that's one of the things. We would, we're concentrating a little bit more on the high school level because we've had some interest from our district youth council that has asked about some diversity and doing some activities that would promote diversity and understanding.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Alan. So, what I was excited about in seeing this is, having gotten the, this, we all got the onward, and thinking about being able to access some state funding that could look at, you know, we talk about narrowing the achievement gap, and then we talk about the all students are college and career-ready, and it talks about specifically the AZTs are measured. So, I think this is really exciting. I'm curious about what the expectations are in terms of reporting, if is it just the world's best workforce will be somewhat modified, and then since we have this continuous improvement stance, how, and we're submitting something that's a three-year plan, do you have some ideas of, how are we going to make it Northfield, make it better every year?
Certainly. It will be part of the world's best workforce plan that we've done every fall, or sometimes in December, depending on how it falls, and it is an add-on to that. So, when we submit our world's best workforce plans, we do the five goals, and now we will do the achievement and integration plan as part of that. And then, at the end of each year, we have to report on our progress towards our goals and then make any budget adjustments or any adjustments to our goals each year of the three-year plan.
Great questions. Any other questions, comments?
Very good, thank you. I think there's, you know, obviously, many competing priorities for not, you know, it's really excellent money, but it's not, you know, there's a limit, there's a finite amount of money, and I think you did a really good job of putting together a sound plan.
Well, this is, has been a team effort. We've pulled people together on very short notice, and they've been very willing to work and to provide input.
We appreciate it, thank you. Okay, so we will move on for our next, so again, board members, we will approve the plan at our June 10th board meeting, so moving forward there. Our next item for discussion, Val Murdestor, proposed 2019-2020 general fund budget. Welcome, Val.
So, I have quite a bit of information to cover, and I realize that you probably didn't ask as many questions on the other budgets I presented because you were going to save them off for this one. So, I am here to present the proposed 2019-20 general fund budget, and there are a lot of moving pieces. So, I'm going to, I have a lot of papers up here, and you had some very small print in your table file that I'm going to reference towards the end, just some kind of changes and questions and items I want to make sure that you're aware of. So, as you know, enrollment drives 65% of our total revenue, so that's something that we track very closely. In my financial projection, in January, I was projecting declining enrollment. That is still the case, but we do have some early kindergarten numbers that are pretty solid at this point, that look like will be pretty stable with where we were this past year. So, I did increase the kindergarten enrollment by about 30 students, which is great. The birth data, you know, is kind of a shot in the dark, I shouldn't say a shot in the dark. We use some analysis, but again, you never are quite sure who's going to show up for kindergarten. So, very excited about that. That does increase the number pretty significantly, but you can see we're still about 30 students less than what we're showing this year. I did, I did chat with our student information specialist, Chris Nesset, today, and it sounds like the open enrollment, the new open enrollments that she's seen coming in are about 65, she said. We have about 24 going out. But again, there's a lot of things that can happen between now and the first day of school, so I'm not going to set my hopes on those numbers yet, but just kind of preliminarily, that's what we're kind of seeing. So, in an ideal world, we would just maintain our enrollment, and that would be great. We'll certainly take whatever we get. So, for this particular budget, we're looking at 4,460.2 weighted pupil units, which is what drives the formula revenue. So, the revenue assumptions that are playing into this particular budget, we now know that we are getting two and two from the legislature on the basic formula, which everyone is grateful for, but as I put in my narrative, I feel it's important to point out that we're getting barely an inflationary increase on 52% of our total revenue. So, I will let Matt make comments on that later because I'm sure he has them. So, we are looking at 6,438 per pupil unit, again, with a slight enrollment decline projected. Special ed, as you know, in 15, 16, they made some pretty dramatic changes to the formula. And a year later, we also joined the Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op, and so we have a lot of moving pieces with special ed in that timeframe. We, I do have about a 3% increase budgeted, and it sounds like the legislature is also removing the growth cap as part of the formula currently, which we are inching up towards. So, that was, that was exciting to hear, and so, that's, that's looking positive. Again, it's, I always feel like it's a little bit of a moving target, but certainly headed in the right direction at this point. Federal sources, we are just holding them flat. We've not been made aware of any sequestration, and we are actually made aware this year of a Title IV, Title IV allocation that we, we're getting a little bit of money for. So, all of that kind of evens out with where we're at with federal. And then, local sources, we're not increasing fees that I'm aware of at this point, and so, holding all of that flat and just status quo. The property taxes is actually the easiest part of my budget because we certified them in December, so I already know that number at this point. I do want to point out, since we just heard the achievement and integration presentation, because we've certified the levy and a portion of that is the levy, we would have to basically double levy for one year to get caught up on the cycle because we already have certified the levy for the next fiscal year. So, just keep that in mind as you're thinking about that program. So, those are kind of the big assumptions, being very intentional about reading my notes so I don't miss anything. So, total revenue, I have two years' worth of our audited financial results, our current revised budget, and then what I have proposed. So, our total property tax levy is just over 14 million. State sources increased over what I had projected in January primarily due to, we had a 1% assumption in January for the forecast, the increase, the 30-student increase for kindergarten enrollment, and a slightly more positive special ed projection. And then, you can see federal and local just holding steady. So, projecting total revenue of just over 55 million for next year. Expenditure assumptions, I'll go through my pages and make sure I don't miss any. So, the expenditure assumptions are a little more involved. There's a lot more line items and things happening on this side than on the revenue side. So, the salaries are a total of about 5.2% of a aggregate increase between all the different categories for salaries that we have. We are currently in negotiations with the Northfield Education Association, so that's something that we need to consider. We are intending to decrease the contingency to 4.0 FTE. It's currently at 7 this year, and so, 4.0 FTE costed at what it would cost for an overload because it's not typically a straight 1.0 position when we allocate that. And then, special ed, as you know, Cheryl's been here presenting several times about the trends that we've seen in special ed, and the budget is no different. In analyzing it, we have seen approximately about a 9.7% increase every year for the last four years in the entire program, not just salaries, benefits, but everything special ed, which is a pretty significant trend. Part of that was the implementation of ADSS, so that is part of the special ed formula, and so, that was an intentional add. But there are two years in that four-year where we weren't adding programs, and that's been a consistent, last year was a pretty significant increase in the early childhood special ed. We saw those numbers and heard her presentation about that. And so, typically, through the budget process, we're using our current budget as a base and kind of rolling forward and adding the positions as, as they're presented to the board and approved. The special ed budget has not been increased 10% every year. And so, looking at that, we're a little bit behind. So, from what was projected in January for the forecast, the expenditures that you're seeing in the budget are pretty significant, significantly increased primarily due to the special ed increases. I went pretty line-by-line through the special ed budget just to make sure that we were capturing everything appropriately. Cheryl and I have met and talked about this and just brainstormed a couple of ideas of how we can slow that trend because the state formula, on average, their goal is to reimburse 55 to 65 cents on the dollar, and so, if we're talking about a 10% trend, that's a pretty significant impact for our general fund. It's not sustainable. So, we've started having conversations about different things and ways we can do anything to kind of help tighten that up and manage it. One example, we are implementing a new time clock system next year that gives us the ability to really put in a schedule for our educational assistance and track that a little bit more closely to make sure that they're on track with what we were expecting and things like that. So, lots of little things that we're hoping can kind of slow that trend, but a lot of it is caseload, requirements, state-mandated, things that we really don't have a lot of control over. So, just wanted to make sure I brought that to your attention. For benefits, we, we are in a five-year increase for TRA. That was part of the last legislative session, so a 0.21% increase. So, we're going from 7.71% as the district contribution to 7.92 for next year, which is a 2.7% increase on top of the salary increases because TRA is a percent increase of the salaries that we're paying for the people that are eligible for that. We also had an increase, a pretty substantial increase in our life insurance premium. We do a three-year renewal for that, and that was about a 50% increase based on our previous. And that was about a fifty percent increase based on our previous claims experience with that. We've also seen a pretty big increase in our 403B participation, which is, which is great. We want, we want our staff to be utilizing the benefits available to them in the contract. But that is a number that's playing into this as well. I will say our HR department has done a great job of advertising and making sure people are aware of the benefits that they have available to them. All right, and then, for non-salary and other operational costs, we have a four-year contract with Benjamin Bus. So we obviously have a built-in percent increase that's included in, in the budget assumptions. Our utilities have been pretty stable this year, so we're not anticipating any wild swings with that. But that is one of the kind of unknowns. And pretty much all the other budgets, discretionary budgets and those types of things were held flat or decreased because I had a meeting with the budget manager and we reviewed things and, you know, if we're increasing, putting a percent increase each year, sometimes things can get out of whack. I met with Joel Olson, our new activities director, and really went line by line through his budget and made sure that it matched up. And there were a couple of different areas where we were able to reduce expenditures and budgets in that, in the activities budget. So that's always good. And then our fund balance goal is sixteen percent of our total expenditures. The unassigned fund balance, I should add that. So expenditures by program. This is not a standard way that I've presented outside of this presentation. I've done this for our budget book, but I've not typically done it for our revised budget. I will be adding that in the future, because when I pulled this together, the first thing that I noticed is that our current revised budget is less than what we actually spent last year for special ed. That was a pretty big red flag for me that our special ed budget was not keeping pace. And had I done that in December with a revised budget, we probably would have been ahead of the game on this a little bit. So, basically, for the most part, all of the line items roll over from year to year. There aren't really large swings. The achievement and integration is not included in this budget. I don't know if I said that already. If the board approves it in June, it is an increase to both revenue and expenditures. And your approval of that program would inherently add it to the budget, if that makes sense. But that's a, both increase in revenue and expenditures and wouldn't necessarily affect the bottom line, because we're matching that. So the total expenditures, based on all of the assumptions that I just went through, is about fifty-five point seven million, which is significantly higher than the financial forecast, based on the reasons that I talked about. And I do, I have been pulling out the capital outlay down here on the bottom. So that is all of our equipment, kind of bigger capital-type purchases. I think it gives a better programmatic explanation, because if I've got, you know, a five hundred thousand dollar project going on in the Buildings and Grounds Department, it kind of skews what that looks like year over year for our regular costs. So I've pulled that out, so hopefully that's helpful for, for people to kind of see the year over year. And then this is the expenditures by objects. So same total, fifty-five point seven million, just kind of structured in a different way, looking at what we're paying for versus the programs that we're paying for. Again, we are people business, so salaries and benefits are eighty percent of our total budget. So making sure that we're getting those numbers right is very important. I will say the revised budget has been, we monitor, Matt and I monitor that in our monthly update as part of our dashboard report. And it has been trending a little bit high. But the special ed piece really jumped out when I put it in that particular format. So, I think we might be a little short on the revised budget for this year. But not super, not the ten percent special ed out of whack for this year. So just making sure that we're clear about that. So this is the one where we kind of pull it all together. And this is the slide that generates a lot of the questions, I imagine. So I included in your table file the financial summary from the financial projection that I did in January. And then I updated based on this information. So there's a lot of moving pieces to that, and I'm going to try and walk through it slowly. I don't have it to pull up on the screen, so you're going to kind of have to bear with me as I identify them. The sheets look identical, which is intentional, because it's a comparison. On the very top, it'll say like one percent change or two percent change. The one percent change is the January forecast. The two percent change is the two percent that we got. So if that helps you differentiate between January and today. So the biggest changes, I'm primarily going to talk about the nineteen-twenty column, because that's what I'm presenting on right now. But I included the two years following, just so you could see the impact of these changes. Because I anticipated that might be a question tonight. So you can see that the sixty-four thirty-eight is the basic formula up there in nineteen-twenty. The enrollment has thirty additional students. So you can see four thousand forty-five point three-five is, is the same enrollment that I presented. And really, the biggest changes are the revenue and expenditures. So I basically matched the revenue and expenditures to this budget, so we could forecast those forward. The revenue went up from the financial forecast because of the enrollment and the two percent versus the one percent. And then the expenditures went from fifty-four point four to fifty-five point seven. So one point three million dollars is a pretty significant jump. But again, primarily due to the special ed budget, not keeping pace with the enrollment changes and program changes that we've had to see there. So, when you get down towards the bottom, there's a, a big box that says unassigned that goes across that's highlighted. And then two rows below that is the actual percentage. So you'll see eighteen point two-five on the January one, and eighteen point three-one on the current one. So, that's even different than what I have right here from last week that I sent you. So a couple of different things happening with that. When I updated the financial forecast, which I don't typically do at this point in the year, but felt it was important with the amount of changes that we're talking about right now, digging into the, the way that the financial projection, the way the reserves are calculated. They're, basically, your total fund balance is restricted and unrestricted. But as part of the unassigned, or the restricted, we have the assigned categories. So we have four million assigned for our other post-employment benefits. And so there's a couple of line items that are pretty standard year over year that we can choose to add or take away from. But we've left them pretty consistent year over year. And there's a few other little ones that are in there. Our carryover fund is in there. There was about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars shown in the eighteen nineteen, reducing that assigned category, which effectively reduces our unassigned. They, you know, they work in tandem, basically, for a total fund balance. When I deleted that, because I didn't have any notes about why I had included that number, which is pretty unusual for me, so I deleted it because there's nothing that I can reference that would actually show we're reducing our assigned by that amount this year. It, we actually end with our new higher numbers at almost the exact same place I was in January, which is good and unusual all at the same time. So, last week I was projecting seventeen point six, but when I reran the actual very specific reserve calculation, we end at eighteen point three-one for nineteen-twenty. That's what we're projecting. Now again, we could end eighteen nineteen a little bit worse off than I'm currently projecting. I don't think it'll be significant. So, moving that forward, it does look, just as I projected in January, that we would dip below the sixteen percent in twenty twenty, twenty-one. But there are a couple of things that we will be addressing through, throughout the next coming year that will help kind of slow that process. So I don't anticipate we will actually dip below sixteen next year, or in twenty twenty-one. We'll be able to kind of stabilize that. But we are obviously moving in that direction. Again, when you're only getting a ba, barely inflationary increase on fifty-two percent of your total revenue. And you're a people business, and people need to have a living wage. This is the, this is the trend, and this is where we end up. So, that's good news. I'm, I'm pretty confident with the eighteen point three-one at this point. I spent a lot of time with the financial production digging into that reserve calculation and making sure that I had all the categories. I do also have some ideas about presenting things differently in the future to help separate, because the operating capital and the long-term facility maintenance are really separate from the general fund. We present them separately and adopt them separately. And so sometimes I think that that can kind of muddy the, the calculation in the projection. So, lots of moving pieces. Let me just see if I have other notes here. Again, the budget is an estimate of how we intend to spend our very limited resources. So, we are constantly monitoring it, changing it, and adapting to make sure that we can maintain our programming as long as possible. We will continue to do that. Our leadership team has been working through implementing the Smarter School Spending Framework. And this is an excellent opportunity to dive into the next steps of really looking at programmatic review. How much are we paying for things? And what kind of return on investment are we receiving for the programs that we are paying for? And really either recommitting to the programs that we're, that we're doing or truly looking at something different. I feel incredibly fortunate to work for a district that prioritizes stewardship. You don't see that everywhere. And so I take this very seriously and appreciate the support and feedback that we can do things like that and really truly look at the budget and make tough choices and, and make good decisions for the district. So, let me just make sure. So that's all of my thoughts there. There are a couple of things that I just want to update you about that are going to impact to this, that I don't have included. So, GASB eighty-four, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, issued, is actually effective July first, twenty nineteen. And we found out in March that they're basically reclassifying the definition of student activity accounts. So we currently have student activity accounts in a, in a separate fund. They're separately presented in the financial statements, and that will be changed in July first. They will be required to be part of the general fund, so they will be under board control. That really changes the dynamic of student activities. So we'll be including those numbers now moving forward. I, I don't have it included because I didn't want to muddy all of this information with, you know, four more things. But that will be part of the revised budget in including that. One of my biggest concerns is that we can't donate out of the general fund. And the student activities have really been an avenue for students to fundraise and support causes that they're passionate about. I did, I had a three-day training with Masbo and went to multiple presentations about GASB eighty-four. And they've allowed quite a bit of flexibility with that. So we will be able to maintain some of those programs and fundraisers that really help kids support things that they're passionate about and teach those, some of those soft skills that we would love them to have. So, that's one big change. And then the other is our scholarship fund, which I presented on just the other week. They've also redefined. Fund eight is also called the trust fund. And so they've really defined that as if you have an actual legal trust document with your scholarship, it can be in Fund eight. Most of our scholarships are not that way. So, pretty much our entire scholarship fund will also be moving into the general fund. So, again, I didn't want to muddy the waters with all of that, because that's some different things. The student activities will have a restricted fund balance account, so it's not going to impact our SOD calculation. It doesn't impact our, the way our unassigned fund balance. It will still be kind of its own separate operating, but it will just be presented this way in the audit. And I will include it in all of the financial presentations that I provide for you. And then the scholarship as well. Again, it'll be restricted and separated, so it's still operating effectively as it is today, but it'll just be presented in a different fund. So those are kind of the big upcoming things. That was a lot of data, and I will gladly attempt to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you. Questions? Ralph?
So on this sheet with the, where you say for twenty twenty-one, it's projected to go under the sixteen percent, although you're working to, to, to change that. But let's say that it does. And you, the plan changes needed for goal, or the seven hundred and...
Fifty-nine thousand.
Fifty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-six. That's how many cuts you'd have to make to get it back up to sixteen percent, right?
Yes.
When would the, when would we have to deal with that?
So, in the event that I did not anticipate being able to switch things up enough to make that happen, there are a couple of things that could happen. The sixteen percent is not in board policy. We were very intentional about not including the written number, but it has been our practice. So we would have the opportunity to say, we're willing to go down to fourteen, knowing that we're going to go through this. We've typically done a program-based budget reduction process that's very involved, community involvement, where we would basically make a longer-term plan to get back on track versus doing a small cut and then a larger cut. And that sort of, I would rather do one more comprehensive process to say, what do we need to right-size the budget and do it once for a couple of years. Any district you see that makes budget reductions year over year over year has a lot of other issues, morale issues. It's a difficult process to manage. It's emotional for people. I'd rather make a more significant cut that would get us to a further point, if that makes sense. So the board would have basically the opportunity to discuss it at that point. I would, I would say we would know by December, when we're doing the revised budget, if we felt like that was still a potential. Because really, for the twenty twenty-one, I'm doing the financial production in January, and then we're adopting the budget in June. So, you don't want to wait too long. Typically, when we've done a budget reduction process, we've done it in the January, February timeframe, so that we have enough time to notify staff based on the contractual requirements that we have.
So, if we, if we needed to act, when, if we went below sixteen percent in twenty twenty-one and we needed to act, that would also impact, then you've got for twenty-one, twenty-two, the four million.
Yep.
We'd make a plan that would, going forward, would impact.
Yeah. And there's, so as a reminder, all financial productions look like you're falling off a cliff just because of the conservative nature of revenue and expenditures. You're always going to do your expenditures high and your revenue low. I have one percent from the state in those two years, which I like to think is conservative and that we would get more than that. But again, we know we'll get two percent for two years. Outside of that is, is more difficult to really project. And then we're negotiating with the Northfield Education Association right now. And so that will drive some of those numbers as well.
I mean, it looks like the worst-case scenario is you make seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in cuts one year and four million the next year. But there are ways, I mean, that's a very, very unlikely situation.
And I think it's important to point out too, when you, if, whenever you make a budget adjustment, there's a cascading impact. So, that, that budget reduction of the seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, that, if that is made, that affects the following year. So it... that affects the following year. So it, that's the nature of these
It's compounding.
You've got it. And so I think that that's a very important part that, but this is the difficulty of not being able to have the long-term financial planning when you are beholden to a group that meets every two years to decide your fate, which I will limit my comments on. But I think that that's, that all of these things are cascading. So, anything that we do to contain costs during this next year, that has a cascading impact. And so, that's why we're bringing it to you. We have a process to bring this to you every year, multiple times, so that you see, this is not a shock to anyone. This is nearly exactly what we have presented for some time. We believe we're going to make it to 21, 22 before we drop below 16%, which is exactly what we promised voters when they passed the referendum in 2017. And so, that is where we're at. It's no secret. We've seen a lot of these numbers very similar for a long time, and this is the nature of the up and down of school finance.
So I just want to continue with this line of questioning.
Sure.
So, we are in the process of negotiating with the teachers' union, and as you mentioned, they're 80% of the budget or some large percentage. Does it make sense to try to tweak the second-year negotiation piece with the teachers' union to try to get us closer to where we want to be as far as our, our unassigned balance?
There are certainly opportunities that we could look at, because it's a negotiation. There, you know, there's two sides to, you know, the story. But there are certainly different ways we can structure the, the total package that have more or less impact, basically. The compounding impact for budget reductions is similar when you're doing negotiations. If you push something to the second year, you know, it saves you that first year. So, there are lots of different strategies and ways we can look at it. It's just what, what would both groups be amenable to.
Right. And from what I'm hearing from Dr. Hillman, it sounds like it's not time to worry at this point, because this is, this is what happens every year.
Well, I, I think in our state, frankly, we always have to worry. That's what you pay us to do. You know, we, we worry all the time because we do not have a long-term financial plan at the state level to provide adequate school funding. It is, 2% does not get it done. And we will do this dance again in two years. And frankly, we are far better off than most school districts. I mean, it's not even close. So, the fact is, we always have to worry because it's by our worrying right now that we avoid the kind of impacts that some other, that you're reading about in some other school districts. So, you want us to worry, is what you
Right.
But it's not time to press the panic button, because, you know, we are looking out, based upon all of the data that we have at this point. We have an excellent director of finance who is extremely conservative while also understanding that we're in the people business and that we're here to serve, serve children. We're not a bank, right? We're always balancing. We want to make sure that we can have people who work with kids for as long as possible. That's always the, the push and the pull of it. So, I think we're, we are adequately worrying. We're also making sure that you have the data in front of you so that you know that when we make decisions, when we ask you to help us make decisions, and you affirm or choose something different for us, that these kinds of, this kind of data is in the front of your mind as we're making some financial decisions, whether to hire, whether to do contracts, you know, those kinds of things.
So, how much flexibility do we have at this point with the teacher and staff negotiations?
So, I think that, what I would say is that negotiations, as Val said, is a two-way street. It's something that we have a very positive process for. We're very transparent. We share the data, you know, with folks. And so, the bottom line is that we will continue to work within that parameter of our job as the, the school district leadership, you know, to make sure that we're striking that appropriate balance between making sure that we meet the needs of recruiting and retaining high-quality employees with a long-term financial benefit of the district. So, we will work through that process in the iterative way that we always do, seeking to strike that appropriate balance.
And I'm not trying to be the mean one. I'm just trying to ask the question.
Absolutely. And it's, and it is a, that is a joy of collective bargaining, you know, as we move ahead in terms of just trying to balance these competing priorities.
Okay. And I do have one other question that I don't understand fully. So, under the expenditure assumptions?
Yep.
It's decreased contingency to 4.0 FTE, and we were at 7.0, and it's down to 4.0. And I know we hired some people, and I just want a little more clarification. So the people we hired are still going to stay, but we still have four? Or, or do we feel like we don't need the 7.0 contingency?
Nope. So, the, basically, if, if we have a position that we've hired with contingency, it is a one-year-only commitment. So, at the end of the year, all of those positions come back to the district. If we hire you, you know that it's not an ongoing position. Some of the contingency that we did this year, the kindergarten at Bridgewater is going, the first grade, they're going back to four sections because the enrollment didn't quite shake out the way we were expecting. There's a couple of other sections that are going down a section, or a couple other grades that are going down a section, I would say a section 18 times apparently. So there, there are specific things that are one-year-only that we come back and then can reassess. So, it's not, the positions aren't, they aren't still ongoing, if that makes sense.
So, are we pretty confident that 4.0 is enough?
I would say yes. So, contingency is, we had a lot of, I would say our enrollment was trending higher last year than it is right now. So that was, that's a concern. And a, a lot of this happens during the summer. So we have 4.0 built in and can assess based on class schedules at the high school, if there's bubbles, you know, and looking at it more collectively as a whole organization versus individual requests coming to you, if that makes sense.
And the bottom line is, we always make the contingency work.
Yep.
So, the contingency is what we have available. And again, we've increased it over the last couple of years because we were seeing increased enrollment at specific points in the system where we needed some class reduction support. And so this is, these are the kinds of tough choices that, you know, we are making to create cost containment so that we can make sure that we are stable long-term. It's one of the reasons we really like the contingency approach, because the contingency approach only guarantees people a position for one year, is able to intervene and help with class size at that point, but it doesn't commit us to a long-term FTE that we would then potentially have to reduce at a later point. So that's one of the reasons that we've used the contingency approach to address some class size concerns, because it provided the great, the greatest flexibility. And at the time, we needed it. And now as we look at it, we will scale that back because we think there's going to be less pressure. However, it is also a tool that we have to make sure that we are looking out, again, both short-term of who are the students and the folks in front of us right now, while balancing that with the long-term, because there's, again, a compounding piece that helps us maintain our 16% goal over several years. So that's, those are the exact kinds of difficult decisions that we are trying to make on your behalf, you know, each, each year to make sure that we are extending our fund balance as long as possible.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then another, sorry, another point just to the, the questions. The enrollment is really a major driver of that number on the bottom, right? So, I'm projecting declining enrollment, and any school district in the state of Minnesota that's projecting declining enrollment cannot manage the budget to keep up as fast as the numbers come down, because we are dealing with people. If you have a 30-student decline, that's one classroom, but it, the odds of those 30 kids being in the same grade are pretty slim. So, our ability to react in a budgetary sense to declining enrollment is a little bit delayed, just because of the process and the way it works. If that number comes in higher, even 10 kids higher, 15 kids higher, it, it slows that number and makes it dramatically different. We, I was presenting this almost same financial projection three years ago, or four years ago now, and we had a huge jump in open enrollment and pushed off budget reductions for almost three years. So, enrollment is a, a major, major driver, and one of the reasons that we present it to you monthly, that we monitor it. We've started kindergarten stuff earlier this year, so we have a better sense. But that is a pretty major influence on that number as well. So, just food for thought.
Excellent.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to spell the whole worry concept. I think we do the work for whatever our contingency plans are, and I've been here nine years. And, you know, we're, we're good at that. I mean, it's like, we work with the funds that we have, and we have four or five contingency plans there, and if we get into that. But it's not like the, we're not going to fall off a cliff. We're going to provide, you know, we're a great school district, continue to be a school district. And if, if we have that fund balance there, that's, it's pretty healthy. If we have to dip into that a little bit, we're in much better shape than a lot of other school districts. So, we just weather the storm and move through that and keep a positive attitude and, and take a leadership role to be positive, to come up with the best plans and programs we can for the taxpayers and be positive about it. So, I guess I just wanted to add that.
Ellen?
So, thank you, and thank you for the additional information. I appreciate sort of your systems perspective. It's really helpful. I just want to make sure I understand. So the difference between the packet and, and this additional information, it was the, like, the post, the post-employment benefits and the carryover fund, and I think I missed, so what, what else in the assigned, the assigned versus the unassigned?
So, so there's four things effectively that go into our assigned fund balance, which is the other post-employment benefit set aside. We have $200,000 set aside for special ed, which predates me, to be honest. It's, I think, there were some special ed budget things that happened, and I wanted kind of this access in case something were to really go awry, like four years of 9.7% increase. So, the OPEB, special ed, our carryover fund, so the balance, we allow very limited carryover staff development funds and basically donations, or kind of some self-sustaining programs that we, smaller programs that we have where they're seeking donations to kind of help facilitate the program. That's included in the assigned, because we obviously are only allowing those funds to be used for what they were donated for. And then, we have some tobacco settlement funds from like 2002 that we use for our wellness committee, and we spend on a really small amount of those each year. So we're just very slowly declining that particular balance. And so, when, when I look at the actual calculation of the reserve, it basically says what's your total fund balance minus your restricted fund balance, minus your assigned, gets you your unassigned. And there was about 465,000 reducing the assigned fund balance. And I'm, I'm pretty meticulous about leaving notes for myself about amounts like that. And there was not a note in there, and so I'm assuming it was a typo. It was supposed to be 46,000 or something for the carryover. And so, when I reduce that amount, it kind of readjusts all of the, the numbers ongoing, because it's obviously affecting that long-term. And so that's why it's, it's jumping up from the 17.6 to the 18.3.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Val. So we'll formally approve this at our June 10th meeting.
Yep. And I will have a lot of information in my budget book that I will present.
Excellent. Thank you again for putting the, the agenda together.
Absolutely.
That was really, really helpful. Okay. So we will move on to, we're doing some policy committee first reading for some new district policies. We'll begin with Erin Bailey, Director of Community Services, who's going to present policy 902, which is facility use.
Erin, why don't you just talk a little bit about where we're at in the process, just a brief overview?
Sure. So you are going to see, there's two parts that are in here. It's the policies and then the procedures. So as you can see, the, the policy in regards to district facilities and equipment is very short. It's one page long and had very minor tweaks to that. Where we are doing more tweaking is in the procedures document. And you will see in the language some tweaks that were made. We have not finalized the tweaks to the fee schedule. So we did, for the fee schedule, did survey all of the big nine districts, not only about kind of their fee structure, but then also what language they have in their fee policies. We have had a chance to do some review of that with internal staff, but just want to vet that out a little bit more before we lay that out as, as the new fee structure as well.
So, we're really trying to have you just see the, the first reading of the policy and some of the initial procedures. This is one of the rare cases where the policy itself requires you to approve the procedures. Most of the time, procedures are administratively done, but in this case, you're required to approve those. And so, we anticipate some additional changes before we bring it back for final approval, but we wanted to get it in front of you so that you had a chance to see it.
Okay. Excellent. Questions, comments on, on the first policy 902? Amy?
I have several questions.
Sure.
So, I would like to suggest the possibility of inserting a fourth priority and changing the fourth one to the fifth one. I think we have a special relationship with our charter schools that we've authorized, and I think they're in a separate class than just everybody else. And so, I think I'd like to recognize that, that we give them higher priority. I'm just putting that out there. So, I, I just think that's, just because of our special relationship with them. And then possibly something similar, if we have, if we're working with local colleges to present extension classes, it seems like we're all involved in education, and we want to be extra supportive of, of those particular groups.
We can certainly look into both of, I can tell you, they are, if they use our facilities once a year, that might be a lot for both of those. Those are neither, neither the charter schools nor the colleges are very heavy users of district facilities. Just, just, we will certainly look into it, I'm just, just for you to understand of how often they use it. It's not very often.
But it might be, it might be just something that
Absolutely.
helps to connect that relationship. I have a question, that's sort of a result of my daughter going to Prairie Creek many years ago, and she's now graduated from high school. So this was something that came up nine years ago, where Prairie Creek had its big spring concert, and they had scheduled one of the auditoriums. And then, two weeks before their concert, which they had advertised, they were bumped out of it because one of the school groups wanted to use it. And I was just wondering, I didn't see anything in the procedures that sort of mentions timing and how bumping works, because that then created a real difficulty for Prairie Creek as well.
So that is language in there that, the, the district, if it is our own internal, you know, unfortunately, things happen and things get rescheduled due to weather or other, and we try really, really hard not to bump anyone, but it does happen occasionally for our number-one priority, which would be the district-run programs. We try, if we know that's going to happen, to do it with as much notice as possible, but that is language in the permits that groups receive. Does that make sense?
I, I see that. I was just thinking, you know, giving them as much notice as possible.
Absolutely.
Two weeks is not enough notice.
Yes. If you advertise that, it's certainly hard. And I'm hoping if that happened nine years ago, we've done
Right. I was hoping you could tell me. And that might be one of the reasons
Yes.
why they don't use school facilities very frequently, because they had that, that system. Then, on page two, it looks like class three and class four are essentially the same thing. And so I was wondering if it makes sense to have the long-term contract people be sort of the class four, and then the non-local for-profit enterprises be part of?
So where they're different, Amy, is in the fee structure. So why they may look relatively similar in the language of kind of who's in those groups,
Okay.
their, their differences fall in the fee structure.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I got that. Yeah, I saw, I noticed that later. But, and then on the third page, you don't mention, for number eight, you don't mention e-cigarettes. And I don't, I might just want to be extra clear about adding that.
Sure.
And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I had one question on the page, the, around weapons and firearms. And under, understand we, exceptions require permission. Do we want to mention the Fourth of July fireworks?
So that, we did have
So, that, we did have some discussion around that, and because it comes to the board every, for the week.
Right, I mean, I know it would still need to come to the board, but we know, is it, should it be there as, as one of the firearm exceptions?
Right.
Because it happens every year.
Yes, and I think because it is the specific event, not fireworks themselves, that we'd be permitted, we decided not to put the language of fireworks in there, because it's actually for that one event, not that as a whole.
Okay, excellent. So, any other questions or comments? So, what I understand is that we, this is first reading, we would approve at our June 10th meeting?
Yeah, and we may, this is one where we're bringing it for the first reading this time, and it's possible that it actually might not come back for the second reading until July.
That's fine.
We're working through the fee structure part right now after exhausting our work on the survey and looking at where we're at, and so, we may have a few more decisions, but we had told you, we were going to bring this to you, we wanted to get it in front of you for the first reading for exactly the kind of questions that came forward tonight, and then we'll be working on the fee structure as we move ahead.
Well, and I really appreciate the diligence you're doing on the fee structure, because I think that's really, I think to have that data is really key to establishing those fees, so excellent work. So, yeah, if it's July, that's.
I would say at this point, it probably will be July, just knowing the components that are trying to work out, wanting to be able to run this by enough people.
No, this is an important policy, we need to take the time to get it right. Okay, so that policy, so then, Dr. Hillman?
Yep.
You're going to review the 531, 722, and, well, the balance.
Yep, so the other three policies that you have, 531 is a new policy that we're proposing based upon the fact that it's, we believe that it's a required MSBA policy that we had not had in the past, and so, again, that's for sure, this is exact language from the MSBA model policy for 531. When we take a look at 722, again, another new policy that is about 98% of whatever it is, is the, is the MSBA model policy, really just brings some clarity around public data requests, and so, really spelling out so that the public understands that when they make a data request, exactly what the process is, we don't have very many of them, but we've seen this policy start to be adopted in several other school districts, and we think it's time to make sure we have some shape and substance to that policy for how the public requests data. The final one is simply because we didn't, we had a 722 before, and we want to keep with what the MSB model policies are so that we're consistent, we simply have to renumber previous 722, which was copyright, we're proposing that back to 719, no changes there other than that. So, again, those are just some first reading things that are brought forward, and those last three changes, we will ask you to consider adoption at the June 10th meeting.
Okay, excellent. Questions, comments on those policies? Amy?
All right, so, the Pledge of Allegiance policy?
Yes.
Where it just says generally, "Students in this school district shall recite the Pledge of Allegiance under Number Two." Is that all students? Because I don't believe it's currently done in the high schools.
That's correct, it's an area that we'll be working on to correct as we move forward.
Okay, so that's, so it would be all schools?
That is correct.
And then, let's see, I had a question, can I move on to a different one? For the public data requests, on B1C, I just, it made me think about when transmitting the data, do you want to say anything about sort of like a secure transmission of data, or I don't know if they will email data at all, or if it has to be picked up on a CD or, I was just imagining someone emailing a file with data on it, and I was worried that that might not be secure, so.
So, I think the key thing is, this is all public data. So, the fact is that the data that we are able to present is data that is public, so anything that would be a mix would have to be redacted, and we have the ability to identify what is the way that we're able to transmit that. So, this is simply, this is their request. So, and if you think about B, you're looking at B, we're actually looking at B1C.
So, you're just saying it would be, even if it got, even if it got somehow intercepted by email, it wouldn't matter, because it's all public data?
That is correct.
Okay, I can go with that. And those were my questions.
Any other questions or, yes, Tom?
So, we don't, sorry, we don't have a policy on the Pledge of Allegiance now.
Right, correct.
And I believe the statute allows us to opt out of this.
That is true, yes.
So, we could vote as, to do that.
That is true. So, we, what we need to make sure that we are following, having that policy in place, and there are a number of pieces in there that, as we said, that the, you know, the E-Board has the opportunity to consider, including opting out of it if that was something that was so chosen. In addition, you know, the fact is that students who don't wish to participate also can opt out of participating in that, and that happens at our middle school, and probably not as much at our elementary school, it's on a weekly basis, but students do have the option to not choose to do that as well.
And it talks about like instruction and patriotic exercises, and instruction in school to help further the purpose of the pledge. Are there, are students taught what the pledge means, its history? Or do they just get up and say these magic words?
So, I think that what I would say is at the elementary level, the students are instructed in the proper etiquette and how to handle that, and I think it's provided in an age-appropriate manner. I do not have data for you on how that is handled at the middle school at this point, nor the high school, but I do know that the elementary schools, of course, students are taught the appropriate etiquette in terms of how to respect the flag and those kinds of things, which includes the possibility to opt out of that as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, now, these specific policies will come back in the June 10th meeting.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, so if anyone has any questions or comments prior to the June 10th meeting, you can get those questions to Dr. Hillman, so we can.
Question or question?
Yes, Jeff.
I remember even as a kid singing the Pledge of Allegiance, and we had one, one person in our class all through that was a particular religion that didn't participate in that, so he just opted out, so it's, you know, it's a tradition that we've been doing for, you know, for a long time.
Okay, so we'll move on now to the, the different district handbooks that we are also doing first reading. So, elementary, middle school, high school, ALC, early ventures, kid ventures, hand-in-hand, co-curricular, and student citizenship handbook. Dr. Hillman?
So, there's a lot of information here, but what I want to point out is the continuous improvement that we've had with sharing the handbooks with you. If you recall, for a long time, we only ever brought the changes to the handbooks to you at the June meeting. We are now making sure that you have an opportunity to have the entirety of the change, changed handbooks at the May meeting prior to us asking you to consider those changes at the June meeting. So, again, this is the second year where we've provided you that huge amount of data for you to take a look at. We are continuing to work with the policy committee to continue to improve this process. We anticipate, one other piece I just want to share with you is that, for a long time, buildings themselves handled the updating of the handbooks, and so, they're, we, through no one's fault, we became inconsistent. And so, what has happened is we now, and the district office from the middle school, elementary school, ALC, and the high school handbook, we are managing those changes, so we now have them all in Google Docs. We are managing any of the changes in consultation with the buildings, but the intent is to bring some consistency. So, as you see how these handbooks continue to improve, there will be more predictability of a parent to look, where is this in one handbook versus the other? We're also modernizing some of them, there are some things that are in some of the handbooks that were important when you used to print them, you know, since they are now, you know, mostly viewed online, we're going to be working with some additional links to resources as opposed to copying resources into the, frankly, some of the handbooks have become inaccessible because they've become so long. So, we're working on making them more usable for the people who are going to access them, and just trying to modernize them and create a system for those updates that ensure that if something's happening in the middle school handbook, maybe we should think about doing that in both the elementary and the high school as well. So, that's the approach. So, there's a lot of information there, and I certainly don't expect people to have been able to look at every single piece of that from this week, but we will take questions or if people have questions on that, we can certainly talk with you about it between now and the next meeting as well.
Questions, comments? I think that, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done on this, because I feel like we are so far ahead of where we used to be, and it was just really easy to look at and to access, and I think to your point about streamlining, so the co-curricular, the current co-curricular handbook on the district website is 96 pages, and we've gotten it down to 21, and again, just focusing on what those user groups that will access it, what information they need, and so, for a parent to be able to access 21 pages versus 96 is huge. So, Anita, big kudos, huge kudos to you for helping us.
Yeah, when I say "we," I mean Anita, so I should make sure that I clarify that.
I mean, you looked at the process last year and kind of like, you're kidding, we could do this better, and so, where we've come in just a year, and we know that it's a work in progress, but we really appreciate it, and it was actually, so, I felt like I knew what I was approving, I knew what I was looking at in terms of changes, they were, they were clearly articulated, and you could follow them, and you could access it, and it's just really, really good. And I know, I had given you some, some comments that will get put through, so we don't need to review those if other board members have anything, or they can email those to Dr. Hillman. Okay, great. So, we will move on, that is it for our items for discussion and report. I have a committee report, but in the interest of time, I think I will just review it really quickly. Schools for Equity and Education, affectionately known as C. As you know, we work with them as a low-property wealth district in terms of presenting those challenges and the complex nature of our districts as two legislators. So, I think we've all seen what has come out of the legislative session. Dr. Hillman and I were at our last meeting of the school year on Friday, so the committee report was included in your table file, and I'll just highlight it, because the major, of course, focus of that meeting was talking about the legislative session and, you know, lots of angst over the months in terms of where we would land, and I think we feel like the word "fair," we got a pretty fair shake out of the legislature, legislator. This year, for the biennium budget, total K-12 education was 543 million. Val has already shown what the 2% and 2% increase will mean for us on the funding formula. Some, I think, real wins in terms of legislators understanding the challenge, but maybe not following with as many dollars as we would like, was of course, the, the dollars on the cross, the special education cross subsidy. So, that was, that was huge. I believe it's 90 million with that amount escalating. So, $90 million on the special education cross subsidy was seen to freeze it so that it wouldn't grow at the districts throughout the state, but that was huge, and certainly we understand that that's around 800 million, and 90 million is just beginning to touch that, but I think to be able to break through after many, many, many sessions of telling them, that was a huge challenge for us as districts statewide, to see them do something was, was really huge. So, then, of course, as C districts, we were really thrilled to see some referendum equalization for two reasons. We received the equalization of $10 million, but it actually came out of the tax committee and not out of education committee, so that was huge. They did preserve funding for the 4,000 existing voluntary pre-K seats, which was huge, and Safe School Aid of $30 million, which we know doesn't really begin to touch the needs, but I think overall, Safe Schools is a, is a good example. They gave us dollars that we can be, you know, there's, there's not a lot of mandates attached, there's, it's money that's going to go to the local districts and be able to be managed as we see, as we see fit. So, so, good news there. And then, lastly, the increase of the Ed to School Credit was huge for, for districts who, like ourselves, have been looking at bond referendums. So, the, the growth is incrementally up to 70% in four years, the Ed to School Credit. And then, the final win, I guess, was policy items were kept to a minimum. So, again, really brief recap, but the evening's getting late, so I think everyone's been watching the results of the legislature and as we move forward with, you know, managing the district finances, we'll see how a lot of these dollars will come into play, but we do have to, I think most importantly, acknowledge Representative Lippert and Senator Drehein, because they really did, were very responsive to, to us and to, to other districts, and really collectively, you know, the various groups coming together and telling legislators what was in best interest of districts and students, and I think we were heard, and, and, you know, they went to bat for us, they understood what we needed in Northfield and how that, we're not only advocating for Northfield, but students in districts statewide, so we really appreciate the work that they did on that K-12 education bill for us, so. So, that is it. Okay, so now, let's move on to the consent agenda. We did have a few items in the table file. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to items for individual action. Our first item is the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement, and we have Shelby McQuay and Barbie Doyle from Ellers and Associates here. We will have them present their information, and then prior to discussion, I will ask for a motion. So, Barbie and Shelby, thank you for your patience tonight, and we're, we're glad you're here. Thank you.
Good evening, I am here to present the results of your lease purchase agreement, so it's sort of been my role at Ellers, I guess, to come to Northfield and congratulate you on your great results. So, you received three bids for your lease purchase financing, and the purpose of this lease purchase financing was to buy the building and grounds facility that you've been using your operating funds to lease, there was a small increase in the levy, because then it will shift then to an increase on paying the debt service, and then you'll be done with that in 10 years, and, and then you'll own the building, so, and then you'll be done loving at that point. So, I'll just channel Joel real quick on a story, we'd, because he's great at those, I know you haven't seen him in a while, but he loves North BLT, he's a Carlton alum. So, we had, we sought bids for your, your lease purchase financing, they were slow to come in, as they usually are with these lease purchases, so we reached out Capital One, and Joel got to talking about, about Northfield and how unique you are, and as it turns out, the, the person who we deal with at Capital One, his, his boss, has a son who attends Carlton. So, so they came in with a winning bid at 2.88, so.
He is Carlton.
Yeah.
2.88.
So, Joel would be very happy that we, that you all heard that story. So, the three bids ranged, we had a presell of 3.75, the, the rates on the, on the other bids ranged from 2.25 from Bremar out of St. Paul, Connecticut 3.85, and then, of course, Capital One came on with the 2.88. What that means in terms of your financing schedule is that relative to where we were at in the presell, you'll have a savings of a little over $29,000 in, in interest savings. The tax impact schedule is listed there in the bottom left on the finance, or on the finance schedule, with just a very small change in the, in the lease levy as a result of shifting from, from the lease to the financing of the, of the lease purchase. So, that was real brief, congratulations on your great results, we're always happy to work with Northfield, and, and if I can answer any questions?
Okay, thank you, Shelby. Questions or comments?
Thanks for giving us 2.88.
That's really exciting.
That's right.
Okay, and thank, yes, thank you for, for coming here and presenting it for all the, you know, the backup documentation. So, if there are, let's ask for a motion, I'm sorry, we did ask for questions, let's ask for a motion, because it is an item for individual action. So, is there a motion to adopt the resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a lease agreement, a ground lease agreement, and related documents and certificates as presented? Moved by Ellen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Okay, now we can ask for questions or comments. None? Okay, so you have a motion and a second, this is a resolution, so requires a roll call vote. Girwitz?
Aye.
Hardy? Hardy?
Aye.
Stratton?
Aye.
Quinale?
Aye.
Brania?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, we'll just say all your words. We have documents to sign for the end of the meeting.
Okay. So, thank you. Bridgewater bid approval. We have very patiently waiting Sal Bagley and Josh from, Josh Cooper from Canute's and Sal Bagley from Wold. So, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Redmembers.
Good evening, Mike. We're gonna get briefed, because everybody probably wants to get home. So...
We love being here.
Right.
You were the ones that were...
Right. We solicited bids for the Bridgewater addition and renovation project, and bids were opened a week ago today at 3:30, at 3:33, Val assisted ripping and tearing them open. And we got a total of 60 bids total, which is great, great participation on the first go-around. Always get a little nervous around summertime work and how busy everybody's schedules fill up. So, that was great. There is a letter, and it kind of results, I believe, in your packets. And the kind of the recap on that, too, is, I believe, five are actually local. I'll call them local. They're within 30-mile radius. And three of the contractor will actually have team members working on the project itself. I guess you could say four if you count me, because I live in Randolph. So, that helps, too. So, it was good participation. You know, looking at the actual numbers and the low bids, we got good coverage, multiple bidders in each section. There was only a handful that was just one or two. And there were two out of the 20 packages, two we did not receive bids on, which, they're pretty minor scopes. It was kind of hit or miss whether we would be able to get those, a number on those. They are small, so we will, on behalf, just solicit some quotes from four or five individuals on signage and the asphalt paving. So, overall, construction, you can see, we're actually slightly under our referendum budget globally, just slightly over. But there's a few scopes we feel we can fine tune and get us right where we need to be included in that overall budget. We are carrying $75,000 in contingencies. So, in a perfect world, that goes back to you anyway. So, it's good news. It's a good story to tell for the first go-around. We've got to do this four more times. So, with your approval, we would like to start issuing contracts as early as tomorrow, because we've got to giddy up and go on the schedule for the 18 bidders that we've got, and basically our general conditions to get trailers hooked up and toilets on-site and trash dumpsters. So, take any questions?
So, this is an item for individual action. So, prior to questions or comments, is there a motion to allow contracts to be issued to the low bidders for the Bridgewater Elementary School addition and renovation at a cost of $1,545,540, the general conditions fee of $185,000, and the construction contingency fee of $30,286 as presented? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. Okay. Questions or comments for Josh, Sal, or Dr. Hillman? Amy?
I'm just wondering if you always take the lowest bidder?
Typically, in the public world, we're required to.
Okay.
There's got to be a pretty good reason if we don't. When we do take, you know, we get the numbers on bid day, usually the following couple of days, we'll actually call and just confirm they've got the scope and got, probably got contract documents. If there's any red flags, we let the school district know immediately. This was pretty straightforward. Everybody's pretty confident in their numbers. So...
Great. It's good to know you check them all out, just to make sure they know what they promised.
Correct.
Josh, I just want to make sure I'm right here that, so the motion that was just done was for $1,545,540.
Sorry?
But I think in the, and that was what was in the memorandum, I want to be really clear. But as I look at the subtotal, it's $1,575,540. So, I just want to make sure that we have that corrected, just I think it's just a...
Yep. If you notice, under the signage and the asphalt paving...
Got it. Thank you.
Their placeholders, $10,000 and $20,000 respectively.
Yep. Perfect. Thank you for...
So, then, the actual amount we are approving is the $1,545. Good catch, though. Okay.
Sorry, moment of panic. You know, it's already overtime for bidding bids, getting all that out here.
Okay. So, the motion is accurate.
And we just need to thank, I mean, Wold and Canute's, and, you know, as you know, we interviewed firms to take on these roles. We interviewed five construction management firms. We interviewed two different architectural firms. And this is the first result of that, you know, the first tangible result of you approving something. And we could not be more thrilled with the partnership, the oversight, the innovation, the thought process, the connection, communication has been nothing but excellent. So, we're so thrilled to have the chance to approve this bid for the first of five projects, as we said, that we get to do with each other. So, thank you to you for managing this process really professionally and making our school district look very good.
Thank you.
Yes. Excellent. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Good evening.
We're gonna start building.
Yes. So, we know, Josh, we know you will be very busy tomorrow.
We will.
Now the fun starts.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, exactly. Okay. Our last item for individual action is the Gleason Property Purchase Agreement. Is there a motion to approve the purchase agreement between Independent School District 659 Northfield Public Schools and Gleason Retail Estate Holdings LLP for 3.49 acres adjacent to the shop at a cost of $180,000? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom. Questions, comments on the Gleason Property Purchase Agreement for either Dr. Hillman or...
And we just want to remind people, this is the, we talked to you about both projects a few months ago. We told you we were going to wait to finalize this purchase of the land adjacent to the shop, and that's what we're executing at this point.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, we, that was quick. So, now, we are on to items for information. Dr. Hillman, we have construction update number eight.
Construction update number eight. And in the next iteration of this, you will have a table that will have when the project was bid and what the anticipated construction end date is, because we now can actually start to create a table like that, which is exciting. But what you'll see is that we continued to work with the Sibley user groups. Actually, today, we started those, first time today, and we're going to finish the first round of those on Thursday. We have completed the Sibley core planning group. We completed most of the Greenville Park user groups. I think we're done with that, maybe one or two follow-up sale. And then, what you'll see is that we also had a project oversight committee meeting today. And so, again, just, we keep rolling down the line. We bid Bridgewater. We've got Greenville Park almost to the point where we're planning to bid that in the next six or eight weeks if all goes well, following Sibley. And then, our next piece will be to start looking at the renovation of the current Greenville Park building, followed by finally, the Longfellow project. So, I really like the way that Anita came up with to do this report, where we gray it out, so you can see all of the progress that we've made. So, we've made just such a lot of progress in a short amount of time, and it's because of the partnership that we've got with our architectural and construction management partners. And outstanding, I mean, outstanding participation by our staff. And so, we're always asking, how are we comparing? You know, because we always want to compare. And what we're being told is that we have people who have got good, specific ideas, but that the process is going very well, and that both Canute's and Wold are getting what they need from us to be able to keep moving forward. So, that's great. Some really excited people who then also start to look at the drawings and say, oh, my goodness, I'm actually going to work on this thing for some time. And so, the level of detail is pretty impressive to be a part of.
Absolutely. Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So, that leaves the review of future meetings, which we are coming into our sort of our summer board meeting schedule. So, Monday, June 10th at 7:00 PM, we only meet once in the month of June. Then, again, on Monday, July 8th, once, one meeting again in July. So, June and July. And then, August, Monday, August 12th. All of those meetings are at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. And just a reminder for those who are able, the ALC graduation tomorrow night at the Northfield High School Auditorium at 6:30 PM, and Northfield High School commencement on Sunday. Commencement begins at 2:00, if we can all meet in the high school office by 1:30. We may or may not have new graduation gowns, but we are assuming everyone has their black gown ready to go with their caps. And Tom, we have one for you. So, we're all set. So, Anita will let us know if the new gowns come in. Actually, the students have gotten their gowns, and they are really, really very nice, new gowns. It's a rental situation this year for students, so they will turn those gowns back in. And I know Lori did order new black ones for the board members, but they may or may not come in, which is not a big deal, because we all still have ours. So, any other specific questions? I know Anita could tell you. But I guess, leaving with, we'll see everyone at 1:30 on Sunday in the high school office unless we see each other tomorrow night at the ALC graduation. So, with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.
That's a lot of great work.
Yes, great meeting, everyone.